Now we're live.
Calling to order, the Albany Unified School District Board of Education Regular Meeting, Open Session for Tuesday, November 10th, 2020. May we have a roll call?
Superintendent Wells.
Here.
President Trutaine.
Here.
Vice President Duran.
Here.
Trustee Clark.
Here.
Trustee Dos.
Here.
Trustee Hinckley.
Here.
Student Board Trustee Mala.
Here.
And Student Trustee Corso Clark.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shin. Our second item is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please feel free to join in. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Item number three on our agenda is the reading of the AUSD Mission and Vision Statement, and number four is the reading of our meeting norms. Student Board members, could you please read those aloud for us?
Yes, the mission of Albany Unified School District is to provide excellent public education that empowers all to achieve their fullest potential as productive citizens. AUSD is committed to creating comprehensive learning opportunities in a safe, supportive, and collaborative environment, addressing the individual needs of each student.
Our meeting norms are: to maintain a focus on what is best for our students, to ensure a safe environment for all views to be expressed, treating each other, staff, and the public respectfully; to endeavor to find common solutions to issues through collaboration without sacrificing one's belief in what is best for students; and to make a commitment to effective deliberation, each one listening with an open mind while others are allowed to express their points of view.
Thank you. Our item number five is report of action taken in closed session. There were no actions taken in our closed session immediately preceding this meeting. We move to item number six, Approval of the Agenda. Trustees, do you have any changes to our agenda to propose? See none. I ask for a motion.
I'll move to approve the agenda.
I second.
Okay. May we have a roll call, though, please?
Student Board Trustee Corso Clark.
Yes.
Student Board Trustee Mala.
Yes.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Vice President Duran.
Yes.
President Trutaine.
Yes.
Trustee Hinckley.
Yes.
Trustee Dos.
Yes.
Thank you.
The agenda passes unanimously. We get to move to number seven, our fun item for the night. We have a spotlight on Halloween activities at schools. Superintendent Dr. Wells, you want to take this over?
Absolutely. Tonight, we have a special feature, Halloween, and it's good to see our community and family out and about, so take a moment to enjoy. It will play momentarily on your screen.
Okay. One second.
We're having some technical difficulty that we're in the process of taking.
Can you stop it?
You should be able to, it's gonna come up, it's just a short, two-minute presentation. You should be able to see some wonderful pictures, so here it comes. I'm telling you, this is worth the wait.
Well, the third time's the charm. Let's see if we can get that going.
Let's go with that one. I like that, the third time. We don't want any strikeouts tonight. You know, technology is just so, so wonderful, except when you have the technology, technical difficulties, then it drives you crazy, but it's part and a way of our life nowadays, so here we go again. It's coming on, but not yet. Yes, I can see the screen.
Okay. Yeah, I can see it. All right, there.
Hi.
Hi, everybody. Say happy Halloween.
Happy Halloween. Happy Halloween.
Well, that was wonderful. It was worth the wait. Thank you very much, Dr. Wells and Assistant Superintendent Marie Williams and everybody else and all of the teachers and students who helped us celebrate Halloween like that.
Yeah, that was fantastic. My youngest daughter made an appearance there. That was exciting to see her on there. Great work, and thank you for showing us that. That was great. And I don't want to take any of the credit. That was led and facilitated and created by our very own Assistant Superintendent Marie. I am not surprised by that at all.
And we were gonna move on to a student-staff report, which is coming early in the agenda because we want to have students able to listen to this and then get on back to their homework or their bedtime, whatever. So we move to item 8-1, the 21st Century Schooling Student Voice and Engagement Initiative. Please take this away, Vice President Duran. She has facilitated this effort from the beginning, and I think this is just part one of what we'll be hearing about in the future.
Good evening to fellow board members and community and staff. This evening, this is just moving on from Halloween to still more exciting stuff that's gonna be moving forward by students, an initiative that's called 21st Century Schooling Student Voice and Engagement Initiative. And I have the pleasure of having worked with the two Student Trustee Board members, Audrey Mala and Leo Corso Clark, as well as the superintendent, in pooling this presentation together for you this evening. We'll start with a quote that speaks to the power of our students, I believe. "When young people discover they can be agents of change, wonderful things happen. They start to serve in the neighborhoods, learn about public issues, create innovative solutions to tough public challenges, and eventually become the voters, community project builders, and leaders in our communities and nations." An overview to this 21st century schooling concept, but first, I'm sorry, Student Mala is going to be presenting, talking about the pictures.
Yeah, so this is just a range of photos that have been taken from the student body in the past few years. I'm just gonna point out, too, so the bottom right is when students let a 17 minutes of silence for the 17 victims of the Marjory Stoneman Douglas shooting, and that is at Cougar Field. And then the middle top one is at a climate rally last year in San Francisco. So those are just some examples of student engagement in the past few years.
Thank you. In terms of sort of looking at this to provide you with an overview, I'll just read it. "Social justice issues, shifting demographics, environmental challenges, and international complexities are having a dramatic impact on our world. Constant emerging technologies in particular have reshaped our economies, our ability to communicate and act globally, and have impacted the way we live and work today. This transformation brings the many challenges of the larger world to our school doorstep. It is crucial that educators, students, and the community actively participate in defining what 21st century schooling should look like. What do students need to know and be able to do in order to be successful in a changing and challenging world? What academic knowledge, skills, attitudes, values, and behaviors will prepare them for this 21st century and a profoundly different future? 21st century schooling includes these aforementioned issues and so many more. AUSD, however, will initially focus on just one. Consistent with our district-wide goal to communicate and lead together, the Student Voice and Engagement Initiative is a powerful first step and a way to amplify all student voices. By reflecting on their school experiences and contributing to thoughtful solutions, students become meaningful participants in their own education, and learning is deepened. This better prepares them for the demands of the 21st century. At the same time, students become effective civic leaders engaged in issues that impact their local communities." And why, or what's this all about? What is the purpose really of this initiative? It's basically to engage and empower all students to participate in an authentic and meaningful educational experience, to build a strong sense of belonging for all the students, honor student voice and its diversity, provide opportunities for students to work and find effective solutions to school issues, and to transform education into an equitable and inclusive safe space for all students."
The superintendent is going to take over now.
Dr. Wells, I think you're.
Yeah, Dr. Wells, you need to unmute.
Thank you. I was saying so many wonderful things that you guys missed, but here we go. The 21st century skills and teaching and learning refers to the five Cs, and I'll get into that momentarily. The term 21st century skills refers to a broad set of knowledge, skills, work habits, character traits that are believed by many educators, school reformers, college professors, employers, and many others to be critically important to the success in today's world, particularly in collegiate programs and contemporary careers and workplaces. Generally speaking, 21st century skills can be applied in all academic subject areas and in all educational career and civic settings throughout a student's life. Again, we refer to the 21st century skills as the five Cs. Started off originally as the four Cs, and just a couple of years ago, the fifth C was added. The first C is really important. It's called critical thinking, and that refers to Bloom's taxonomy of academic rigor, and I'll circle back to that on the next slide. Next is communication. Our focus tonight and throughout the year would be student voice and engagement. The third 21st century skill is collaboration. How do we work with all folks from every walk of life throughout the world? And number four would be creativity and innovation. How do we promote and encourage creativity and innovation within our students and throughout our community? And number five, that was added a few years ago, citizenship in the form of advocacy for fairness and equity. And so those are the five 21st century skills, and I just wanted to give that overview. But the next slide, as I said, I'm gonna go back to the first C, and that's critical thinking, and it refers to Bloom's taxonomy of academic rigor. And so rigor starts at level three, apply, but the foundational taxonomy of academic rigor is remember. It's important that students can remember and recall some basic facts that are really essential to step number two, and that's understand. And as a former teacher, typically, way back in the day, it used to be where, when we taught it and kids understood it, we moved to the next subject. 21st century say, hey, hold on, we need to go deeper. We need to make sure we provide rigor in everything we do in terms of teaching. In other words, how do we get kids not only to remember, but when they understand, how they take the understanding and apply it? And so that's when you get into the rigor level number three with the apply. And then after that, how do you analyze it? And then how do you synthesize? And finally, how do you evaluate? And synthesize, evaluate have been really great arguments at the university. For example, at Cal, they would argue synthesize to be the top academic rigor, and it should be number six, not five, and Stanford would argue that no evaluate should be on the top, and simply because when you evaluate the task, you make adjustments to constantly engage in a cycle of continuous improvement. But regardless of who you believe, we must concur that the last two, synthesize and evaluate, are the two highest level of critical thinking. Next slide. Student Voice and Engagement Initiatives is what this is really all about, and at this time, I turn it over to our trustee, Audrey Mala.
Thank you. So we can move on to the next slide, actually. So this is a quote that we thought kind of encapsulates our objective of the broader theme being 21st century learning and this specifically being student engagement and voice. So the natural outcome of having high expectations for youth, for viewing youth as resources and not as problems, is the creation of opportunities for them to be contributing members of their community. So that's something we wanted to keep in mind as we do this presentation specifically and move on with more 21st century learning in the future. So our current practices is something that Leo and I compiled of what the high school and district is currently doing to engage students. So first, we have the California Healthy Kids Survey, which is administered for ninth and eleventh graders, and a component of the California Healthy Kids Survey is student connectedness, learning engagement, motivation, school climate, and culture. So just from taking this survey in the past, I remember one of the questions being along the lines of, do you feel like your voice is heard in the classroom? So questions along the lines of that is helpful when we're gauging the student opinion in regards to how much their voice is heard. Administrators also conduct surveys. So, for example, a few weeks ago, they sent out a survey regarding distance learning, again, to gauge the feeling and sentiment of how students are doing. We have a leadership body, which includes the Associated Student Body, which is the IFB, class cabinet, so these are representatives from each grade level, commissioners, and then student representatives. And more specifically, the student representatives include the IIC, which is the Instructional Improvement Council, School Site Council, the Parent-Teacher-Student Association, the LCAP, which this year is the local, no, sorry, the Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan, formerly the Local Control, and I got that wrong, the Local Control and Accountability Plan this year, past year, sorry, that's a mouthful. And then our English Language Development Representative, Special Ed Representative, and then students also serve on citywide committees, including the Environmental Action Plan, and there are, there's room for two more students on the Academic Achievement Task Force, which I know Superintendent Wells and Board Member Dos are working on right now. So those are some examples of how students are specifically being incorporated in decision-making through these committees. Also, there's Leo and I on the school board, obviously. So there's a wide variety of students being engaged through decision-making bodies. Additionally, civic engagement is included in the US government curriculum, which is a requirement for all seniors, and this will go over state, the federal government, the state government, and then also the local government, including city councils and school boards. And you may remember, a lot of students came to the school board meeting last November, I believe, because it was extra credit, just to show them how a school board meeting works and how local government works, and encouraging them to participate further. And then we also have a really active club life at Albany High School that organize events, including forums, open microphones, group discussions. And some of these clubs, not all of them, of course, but some of the ones focused around social justice and student engagement specifically include Speak Stand, the Black Student Union, Amnesty International, and of course, Diversifier Narrative, which presented to the board a lot.
All right, we can head to the next slide. Thank you. So these are a couple ways that Audrey and I specifically, as well as Michaela, who was the former student board member before me, have sort of incorporated student voice in our decision-making process. Main one we've done is school-wide Google Form surveys. We did those at the end of last spring for both distance learning and mental health, so general school atmosphere, and gauging how students were feeling after the whole coronavirus pandemic started and school shut down. We've also done more brief, basic surveys using the class accounts on Instagram, the stuff where we presented about students' feelings about distance learning, about going back to school, and how they feel about the safety precautions for COVID-19. Those were done from Instagram surveys. We've also held school-wide student forums a couple of years ago. We had a school-wide student forum when the board was discussing budget cuts, and a lot of students showed up and were very vocal at those meetings. We've also met with specific clubs to discuss specific issues a couple of times. We did that as a follow-up after our racial justice forum earlier this October. And then lastly, Audrey and I sit in every leadership advisory at the high school, which has over 30 students of all grade levels that are both democratically elected to positions like president or vice president, but also with all the student reps that were previously mentioned on seats on committees such as IIC, LCAP, the Environmental Action Committee. So these are a couple of the different ways that Audrey and I so far have been incorporating student voice into our work. Next slide. Now, of course, there's always room to do better, so we made a short list of a couple of things that we'd like to do more in the future this year, including a bigger variety of ways for students to engage. We've talked about charting input from specific groups. You know, we've done this a little bit by visiting specific groups, such as Indigenous Club and BSU, but we have, for the most part, a lot of our surveys are just school-wide, and so charting specific input on specific issues from groups that don't often get surveyed, such as English Language Development, Special Education, et cetera, those groups we'd like to talk to more of this year, more specifically. Again, shorter surveys on more specific issues. I'm sure many of you have gotten very long surveys asking a broad range of questions, and while those are very helpful as well, it's also nice to have shorter surveys on more specific issues that can give us more concrete information that's easier to process and work with immediately, so we'd like to do more of that in the future. Also, communication with both teachers and students. Something that students have vocalized over the years is that they feel like there's a lack of transparency in certain decisions that affect them, that teachers make. A big issue that arose last year was the high school discussing weighted GPA, and for the first time, this was my junior year, but for the first time in high school, there was a big forum where it was a discussion between the teachers and the students, where the teachers were sort of explaining their thought process. Ms. Park, now Ms. Rhodey, presented, and teachers got to voice their opinion and ask questions, and I thought that was very productive, so we'd like to see more of that the following year. And then also reaching out to students at the middle school. This doesn't often get done, but some of these decisions definitely affect them, too, and from past experience, the middle schoolers definitely have something to say about their education and their life in the classroom and at school, so we'd like to talk to them about that more. The last thing is a potential board policy on student voice and engagement, so this isn't just rhetoric, we're actually taking action, and this was the idea of our own superintendent, Dr. Wells, so I'm gonna let him elaborate a little more on that.
Thank you so much. The important thing about having this policy, it will be converted and operationalized into part of our culture here in Albany Unified School District, but I want to pause and acknowledge and appreciate a quiet but mighty voice who is the spark of this initiative of student voice and engagement, and that's our very own Vice President Clementina Duran. And so with the board policy on student voice, her goal was to make sure students are included, not sometimes, not only on big issues, but on all issues, and we want a policy that reflects that. And so that was the thinking around making sure we have this board policy on student voice and engagement. Next slide.
Vice President Duran, you need to unmute.
Sorry about that. We're going to go to questions and answers, and I'm gonna return it to our President Trutaine, so she can roll it out for us.
Certainly. Thank you very much. That was an excellent presentation. Thanks to all the presenters, especially our student presenters. I want to first open it up to questions from the board, and then we can move to public comment. Let's see. Trustee Hinckley, please go ahead.
Can you hear? Excuse me, can you hear me? Okay, I'm on two different things, so that hopefully one of my internet connections will work. So my main question is just sort of what you see the next steps as being, how you're gonna move this forward, but I also just wanted to express appreciation for putting all of this together, but I'm curious, sort of, what are the areas where you feel like there are...
But I'm curious, sort of, what are the areas where you feel like there are, there's sort of work to be done with the students at the school sites, with the principals and staff? And what are the areas where the board could be engaged and try to identify, for example, the policies that you're thinking about? Or are there other steps, other issues the board could take up to sort of help move this conversation forward more about how we incorporate students into different aspects of our discussions?
Trustee Hinkley, I want to thank you for the question. In the spirit of our initiative, student voice and engagement, I turn this over to our student trustees to grapple with that question.
Could you repeat that very quickly?
Sure. I was just curious what you see the next steps as being, and especially if, if you have thoughts about what the board can do to facilitate some of those next steps. Or, you know, what are the other sort of kinds of conversations or places where you want to engage with the non-students, teachers, principals, et cetera?
For sure. So I know a sort of smaller example of this is in the L C A P. You're required to, when you're developing the L C A P, the Local Control and Accountability Plan, or this year, the Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan, lots of acronyms. But you're required to take input from every group of stakeholders within your district, including students. And that's something they have to do while you're developing the document. And so I think that having a start, some small like stipulation like that, where the board, when they're making big decisions, they are required to take input from students in at least one way, whether it's a survey or an in-person forum or something like that, or a virtual forum in the foreseeable future. Something like that, I think, would be very beneficial to just having us, having students included. Because even if there isn't, even if it doesn't seem like there's, there's high turnout or, or high interest, it's probably because a lot of students just don't know what's going on. And there will definitely be students who would like to give their opinion. Another thing, which is a little more complicated and fairly recent, is this thing called the State Civic, uh, State Seal of Civic Engagement, which was recently put out by the California Office of Education Superintendent Tommy Thurmond. And there, there's a lot of details that I don't know off the top of my head, so I can't get into now. But it's, it basically just encourages students to be active citizens within their district and in high school. And there's a couple of requirements, and it's something that you would get at the end of graduation. And although it's not necessarily strictly about gathering student input, it would encourage students to be more active citizens. And I'm sure that would include, uh, include sort of being engaged in school board related processes. And I, I believe it's to the discretion of their, of each district to measure certain aspects of that. And so that could definitely be something that we look into more and possibly include in this board policy. But those were two ideas that Audrey and I had.
I think.
Can I, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
I was just going to offer one, one idea that I think we could use some thoughts about our, you know, we struggle to get robust responses to our own efforts to engage families in doing surveys and so forth. And I know we've had some conversations about the sort of pros and cons of using tools like Instagram to reach the students. So one thing that would be great is for us to be able to sort of learn from, from you and the other students as you develop different mechanisms for surveying students and exploring, you know, questions about who you hear from the most and who you don't hear from. And, you know, you discussed some of this in your presentation, but I think this, this is an area where we could maybe, you know, learn from each other in terms of how we continue to push on trying to hear from individuals and groups that we don't hear from maybe as frequently as, as some folks.
I think something that I identified, I identified as something I would like to look into is, I talked about how the U.S. government curriculum has, uh, I mean, obviously, government-related topics, specifically local government. But that is a, that's only a senior class. So I think if that is started earlier, obviously, we can't change the state curriculum. But Albany does have a lot of jurisdiction over what is taught. So even if it's just a day or two of, you know, how do you get involved in your community as a freshman or in middle school? I think, you know, once people get to senior year, they kind of know the path that they are taking. And if they are involved in their school community, that's something that's kind of already decided by senior year generally. So I think starting that process earlier is really important to get a broad, broader engagement of students.
If I could just add as well, Trustee Hinkley, that honestly, I think the board needs to catch up with our students. Students are a fabulous resource. And we're in the 21st century, and I think we haven't worked with them in a, in a meaningful way. And I think it's time we catch up with them. In the last couple of years, they've been passing us by in terms of telling us areas that concern them. And, and I think what we really want to do at the district level is formalize it, recognize it as a powerful tool that students need to be engaged for first, their own learning purposes, right? If they're motivated, they're going to be much more interested in learning. And there's all kinds of connections for them to make with the real world and the academic world. And, and, and as was pointed out, the diversity of students, of voices is so important. And Albany has a, has a wonderful, has wonderful diversity in, in the student population. And I think we need to, once again, provide for opportunities for students that we haven't heard from before to speak about. There's so many issues and, and, and the 21st century in terms of that umbrella, there are lots of issues. And, but we wanted this to come from the students, not to come from the adults. Or, you know, we wanted it to come from their own introspection, their own learning and what motivates them. So we are the catalyst to help them in the sense of formalizing it. And, and the process hasn't really been defined yet. I mean, there are certainly forums, that kind of thing. But we wanted to just kind of present it first, and then we'll follow up with really definitely much more engagement about how best to go forward, especially with our student trustees leading, leading us in this effort.
Something, just to come back and answer your question about gathering input in those strategies. So, yeah, obviously, Audrey and I, we've, we've tried a lot of different ways to gather input over the years. Some of those big wide overs, big wide surveys, some with the smaller, more focused Instagram ones, which aren't scientific and are just like purely just like based on like a general, that we're just gathering a general sense. But I think I mentioned this earlier in the presentation, but the most robust feedback we've ever gotten has always been from in-person or face-to-face forums with students, where we just ask them guiding questions and that starts a discussion. And there is the issue of, well, it's like, like Audrey said, you, as the older you get, participating in our, in, within like the school board and within your district community, that stuff is kind of set. And so we keep seeing the same faces. But an alternative to that, that we haven't done often for a school board, I know leadership has done it a couple of times, is just directly visiting classrooms, which is hard to do for parents, because there's not a place where every single parent, there's not, is, is like you can, you can't find every single parent in a certain place at any given time. But there are definitely, I know, parent groups who meet on a regular basis. And going directly to them, just sitting in on a meeting, asking a couple of questions, for students at least, has been very helpful for us. And I think that could be a strategy that's, that could be implemented at a district-wide level.
I'd like to go ahead and take public comment on this item. So if you're an attendee and you'd like to comment on this student voice and engagement initiative, please raise your hand. And then after public comment, we'll come back to the board for any final, final comments. Okay, not seeing any public comment, I would like to move it back to the board. And I would say that I'm, I'm shortly going to have more free time, because my term on the board ends in December. And if any of the I H S teachers at the high school, the ninth grade Identity Health and Society class, would like to have a visitor sometime in the spring to talk about opportunities on how to get involved. I would be happy to come by and talk to your class briefly about that. Back to the, to the board. And to staff.
This is the first time I have seen the board speechless. I think they were wowed. So good job to our team of our wonderful student trustees and Vice President Duran. And it was really great working with you guys. We just have a brilliant display of students' excellence, which is summing up. And so I'm just so proud of our students, and it just reminds us why we do what we do. And it just really fuels our tank, our tank. So thank you for what you did tonight. I'm sure it was a learning experience for all, and I want to encourage you to continue to be the great leaders that you are. And I look forward to reading about you, voting, voting for you if you decide to get into civic government. So thank you for what you're doing. I think they deserve a round of applause.
Thank you.
Well, I would like to say something if we have a couple of minutes.
Go ahead, Trustee Dos.
It's not easy, you know, stepping up to the plate. It's not an easy thing. A lot of people see different things, and they will talk about it and complain until they are blue in the face, as people like to say sometimes. But you don't always have individuals that are willing to step up to the plate and put in the time and, and the action that it takes to really move the needle. And when you see that, it's an amazing thing. And I hope, the reason why I wanted to stop and say a few words is because I hope that you won't stop with this. I hope that you, you will continue to move the needle and continue to take action when you see that it's necessary. And as Dr. Wells said, I look forward to seeing that in the future. And so I just wanted to thank you and continue to motivate you as you move forward in the future.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And with that, we will move on to our item number nine on the agenda, Approval of the Consent Calendar. Does anyone have comments on any of the consent calendar items? If not, we could have a motion.
I move that we approve the consent calendar.
Second. Second.
Ms. Shen, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Student Board Trustee Corzo Clark.
Yes.
Student Board Trustee Malah.
Yes.
Vice President Duran.
Yes.
President Trutain.
Yes.
Trustee Hinkley.
Yes.
Trustee Dos.
Yes.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
The consent calendar passes unanimously. Thank you, board. That, and that moves us to item 10 on our agenda, which is Superintendent and Board Member Reports. Dr. Wells, we'll start with you.
Thank you, President Trutain. My report will be pulled up on your screen momentarily, and I would just be real brief. Just wanted to kind of make sure that the board and the community looked into some of these activities that we have going on around the district. We have in-person activities, although they're few, they're growing. For those who don't know, preschool opened on Monday, November 9, 2020. Yes, they opened yesterday in small hubs of seven, and to be extended to 14 in about three weeks. So we're excited about that. That would be followed by our elementary schools opening in January. And then our middle and high school, February 1st. So stay tuned for more of that to come. We have our outdoor pool is open at Albany Aquatic Center, serving our community and our, many of our students and swim teams. We have football and fall athletic practices starting outdoor at Albany High School. So we're starting to open up. We have our Albany High School Choir that meets on a regular basis outdoors. And that's good to know. Next slide. And then we have, in special education, we have our in-person assessments that started weeks ago. We have our special day classes. Some hubs are scheduled to start next Monday. Social, emotional, and instructional hubs, our kids need that support. We wish we could have started three weeks ago, but it's not that simple. We wish it was. Let me just say it's complicated, but we're pressing on. We're in the process of trying to establish additional in-person hubs for our most vulnerable students. And next slide. Announcement, Superintendent forums will continue. Our next forum on reopening schools, program options, pivot to hybrid in-person instruction. And that would take place December 10th, from 6:00 to 8:00 P.M. We will have a review of some of our updated safety protocols. And then we would get into our schedules and instructions and our plan for pivoting to hybrid in-person learning. Again, starting in January for our elementary school and starting for our secondary schools, middle and high school, February the 1st. President Trutain, that concludes the superintendent report.
Thank you so much, Dr. Wells. I have a, just a very brief report. One of the items that we passed just now in our consent calendar was a Resolution Number 2020-21-09 for an Environmental Action Plan. So just a month or so ago, our Sustainability and Integrated Design Committee asked to change their focus and their name to the Environmental Action Plan Committee. And we're already getting results from them. They drew up a framework and presented it to the board and the public through this resolution for an A U S D, Environmental Action Plan. And so I was really pleased to see this item and pleased to see it pass unanimously. And look forward to, while I'm a part of that group, and I look forward to that work going forward. The other thing I wanted to mention was I am part of the Elementary School Reopening Advisory Committee Task Force. And we met for the first time yesterday for an hour and a half. It was a very deep and interesting and thoughtful meeting. There are a lot of good minds at the table, and we're going to continue meeting and meeting frequently to work out all of, 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 well, not all, but to, to do our best to work out many of the necessary issues and questions about getting some of our kids back onto campus. And then lastly, I will say that the board was very pleased to hear from the Albany Teachers Association that they ratified the Memorandum of Understanding with the district regarding the reopening of the preschool Albany Children's Center. And we all look forward to getting a chance to approve that contract at our next meeting, which is in just one week. So this meeting tonight was pushed, you know, sort of late because of the election last week. And then our second meeting in November was pushed a bit early because of Thanksgiving. And so we have. And so we have meetings just one week apart. We are meeting tonight, November 10th, and we will meet again November 17th. So, thank you very much. And I'll pass it over to Vice President Duran.
Good evening again. And I would just like to take the time to do a land acknowledgement. Lazo kamati gracias and gratitude in recognition that Albany sits on the territory of the Wiccan, the ancestral and unceded land of the Chocheño Aloni. This land continues to be of great importance to the Aloni people. We recognize that all of us in Albany continue to benefit from this land that we live and work on. Consistent with Albany values of community and diversity, we have a responsibility to acknowledge and work on our relationship with the native peoples. And a student from Albany High School at our last meeting reminded us that we need to maybe take another step forward, not just acknowledgement, but actual actions that we are doing to improve our relationships. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Clark?
Yeah, thank you, President Tretain. I just wanted to take a brief moment to thank a member of the community. I had a very nice encounter yesterday. I was coming out of a local business. And somebody asked me, hey, are you on the school board? And I said yes. And the individual thanked me for advocating for her son many, many times at the board meetings in the past. And I just wanted to acknowledge that a lot of times as board members, we take heat. And it's just nice to actually be acknowledged that we may differ on our opinions. But for this person to go out of their way to thank me, it meant a lot to me. And I just wanted to tell that person, if you are watching tonight, thank you so much. I expressed that it's very easy to criticize people and condemn people, but it's a lot harder to actually thank people for their service. So, if you're out there listening, I want to thank you very much. It meant a lot to me. And I just wanted to share that.
Thank you, Trustee Clark. Trustee Dos?
Well, hello. I have a few things. First, I wanted to congratulate the board members who were recently elected in our election previously. Veronica Davidson with 6,610 votes and Melissa Boy with 5,471 votes. So, I wanted to congratulate both of them and look forward to working with them in the near future. So, congrats to both of them. And the second part of my report is, in a week, I will be welcoming the newest member of our family. So, I'm going to be having a little one. And the reason why I'm telling you that is because at the request of my better half, I will be decreasing the number of meetings that I usually have so that I can focus in on making sure that her delivery is smooth and that I'm able to be there for her and for the baby and also for our other two kiddos. So, I wanted to just mention that to everybody, that I really do value the work that I'm doing here with the school board. But it's time for me to take a step back and do, and do that job. So, I appreciate everybody understanding and helping me out with that because you know it's hard for me to say no when you guys need me to like step into something. So, instead of me having to do that, just, just don't ask me for a couple of months so that I can not get in trouble with the missus. So, I really appreciate that. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Trustee Dos. I am, both of those items were so important. We look forward to welcoming the new trustees onto the board at our December 15th meeting when, after Albany certifies the election and we can induct you onto the board. And then, Trustee Dos, I wish you and your wife a very safe and happy birth and a great bonding time with, with your new arrival. And with that, we will move to Trustee Hinckley.
I'm just smiling at the news of babies. It feels like a year when babies are especially exciting. And yeah, I wish you guys all the best and I hope everything goes, goes great. And we want to hear about it as soon as you can share pictures. So, I have just a couple of items. One is today, unfortunately, they finally have called the election for Proposition 15, which did not pass in California, which is really, you know, sort of devastating news for school districts. And hopefully that coalition will be able to mobilize to figure out another way to get us the funding that we need. So, that was disappointing. And then my other, the other statement I wanted to make was just that many people may have seen that Alameda County is concerned about rising infection rates in the county as we're seeing nationwide. And they issued what I thought was a really useful set of guidelines for people to think about in the holidays, about avoiding indoor gatherings, avoiding traveling, quarantining if you leave the Bay Area. And I just, I know the district's going to share some of that out. But I think we're all really excited to see our schools planning for reopening and looking forward to them reopening. But it really hinges on all of us continuing to stay really vigilant about trying to keep, you know, ensuring that we stay at least in the orange tier. So, I hope we can share some of that guidance out. And so that I don't end on a sad note, I'll just remind everyone that there's a baby coming next week. We're all excited. I don't know if anyone on the board has ever had a baby while sitting on the board. So, this will be like an adopted Albany, you know, team member. That's my whole report.
Thank you, Trustee Hinckley. We'll move to the Student Board Member Report.
Thank you, President Tretain. So, at Albany High School, there are two weeks left for the Item Drive, which is done through the Berkeley Food and Housing Project, a local organization that supports individuals and families experiencing homelessness. So, there's a list of needed items on the website tiny.cc/pointslist. And all those items can be brought to the Albany High School main atrium. And then additionally, to lift spirits and build community during this time, Albany High School Leadership is hosting a virtual spirit week starting on November 16th. And each day has a different activity. So, there's going to be a teacher gaming livestream, a cooking competition, a talent show. And then at the end of the week, there's going to be a teacher and staff appreciation. At Albany Middle School, the AMS Library is working with Pegasus Books on Solano Avenue. So, if you shop in-store or online, November 9th through 15th, so this week, a percentage of your purchase will go to the AMS Library. And to ensure that this happens, you can say Albany Middle School at the time of your purchase or type Albany in the comment field when ordering online. And then lastly, for the middle school, the AMS PTA is hosting a special presentation with Patty Funtaxis, who is an expert on adolescent development and parenting strategies. And this program on Thursday will cover the arc of adolescent development, focusing more specifically on the transitional time between elementary school and middle-aged children.
At Marin Elementary, Principal Poole is hosting a virtual coffee chat with parents on Thursday, November 12th from 8:00 to 8:45 at Cornell this month. And throughout the rest of the school year, students will have access to additional art lessons taught by Winoka Turin. Lessons will be accessed through teacher class websites and are intended to support students emotionally by bringing joy and more opportunities for self-expression. These lessons are funded by generous school care donations. The PTA Care to Call campaign will be reaching out to families this month with the goal of community building and creating connections between families throughout Cornell. A new student directory is also a part of this project, so be on the lookout for that digital resource intended to promote communication and relationships among students and families. At Ocean View, on Wednesday, November 18th, from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m., an Ocean View fundraiser will be held at Chipotle, the one on San Pablo, which is 9901 San Pablo Avenue in El Cerrito. This, the fundraiser, to ensure all the portions of your purchase goes to Ocean View, mention the Ocean View fundraiser to the cashier and bring a flyer to give the cashier. Or you can order online using the code MWG6LJJ. And that's a lot to memorize, but don't worry because for more information on these events and all this and writing, and the newsletters for each school site can be accessed on our district website, austk12.org, on their respective webpages.
Thanks, everyone, for your updates. We're now at item 12 on our agenda, which is Persons to Address the Board on Matters Not on the Agenda. So, I do see we have a hand up. If you're an attendee, we have several handups. If you're an attendee, now is the time to speak. If your issue is not on our agenda, of course, if we're going to talk about the item later, then you should wait until we are at your item of interest. Our first speaker is Amy Appel. Please go ahead.
Thank you, President Tretain. I'd like to ask Dr. Wells to clarify what's being provided at Albany Middle School. My understanding is that the hubs that have opened this week are not providing any form of instruction and that they're offering only social-emotional services and, in fact, are only two hours per week per student. So, maybe we could get more clarity about that. Also, I was told that my student's assessments for his triennial IEP can't be scheduled. And I'm not sure how that jibes with assessments, in-person assessments, being underway in the district.
Hi, Amy. Good to see you, at least hear you again. Tonight, we have our very own Special Ed Director with us, Dr. Cynthia Ortiz-France. And I'm going to have her respond to those two questions.
Hi, Ms. Appel. First, I wanted to talk about our hubs opening at Albany Middle School. We have a social-emotional hub that's going to start out and it's going to expand into instructional support for distance learning. And there were letters that went out to parents about that. Regarding the second matter, I would want to invite you, just for this to, you know, be, you know, understood more, to contact me directly so that I can support you to get some resolution with the triennial.
But thank you for that.
Our second speaker is Joel Ervice. Please go ahead, Mr. Ervice.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Superintendent Wells and members of the board, I wanted to ask about the Superintendent Forum that's scheduled for December 10th, I believe. Two things. I'm wondering if that moved up, so sometime early the week of November 30th. And then I'm also just hoping that even more general information can be provided to us sooner. So, in terms of moving the meeting up, I think families are really hungry for as much information as possible as what things are going to continue to look like. And December 10th leaves a really short period of time for families to hear the information, understand it, think through what, you know, is best for them, given health and safety concerns, social-emotional health, all those other factors. I did think that the board meeting was going to be after the 10th, or excuse me, before the 10th. But Board Member, President Tretain, you mentioned that it's actually on December 14th. The AUSD Board says it's still December 8th, so that may have been my mistake or some sort of typo. But then also, just in terms of having additional information earlier, I think, you know, district staff have done a remarkable job of responding to input and being flexible and so providing, again, more time for them to do that process. I think that would be, that would be very useful. Like I said, I think families are very hungry for as much information as possible so that they can make really informed decisions. And holding a meeting on December 10th feels very late, considering the holidays, considering we'll likely need to let the district know what we want to do shortly thereafter, etc. So, I'd appreciate your consideration about that. Thank you.
President Tretain, can I respond quickly? Joel, first of all, it's good hearing from you again. Secondly, we can provide some general information that might be helpful before the 10th, we're hoping by the end of November. But I don't want to mislead you or get your hopes up high that we can move the December 10th meeting up any sooner. We have timeline and some much-needed work before we can really get into all the details, but nothing preclude us from giving you and the whole community a skeletal of where we are, which I think may be helpful. And I could agree with you, more information sooner is better than later. So, thank you for that.
Also, I would like to comment on Mr. Ervice's comments. I, I did mention about our December meeting being on December 15th, and that is a change. So, I would hope that the district would be able to correct the website sometime this week to reflect that. And the reason for that is because there was a change in state law stating that we cannot induct our new trustees until after the second Friday of December. And so, our meeting was originally scheduled prior to that, and so it had to be changed for that reason. We need to get that information out and make that more widely known. So, thank you very much for mentioning that. And I did also want to mention that I believe that the district is going to be sending out a new survey to parents in the near future. And that will be another opportunity to help inform the district's process as we go forward with this planning for reopening. All right. And so we can move on now to our item number 13, Staff Reports. And I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Wells, to introduce the Student Achievement Report from Albany Middle School.
Thank you, President Tretain. I have the good fortune tonight to pass baton on this matter to our very own Assistant Superintendent Marie Williams.
Thank you, Dr. Wells. Good evening, Board President Tretain, Board Members and Community. This evening, we will be continuing our student achievement conversations with our school sites. You've heard from our three elementary schools. Tonight, you will hear from our Albany Middle School staff. Joining us this evening, the Principal, Ms. Brill, and her team. And I'll allow her to go ahead and introduce them. There were some questions that came from the board yesterday requesting some additional data sets. We did spend some considerable time yesterday and today gathering those for you. So, those will be incorporated into the presentation. So, the slides that you will see this evening will be slightly revised to reflect the requests for additional requests from board members. And so now it's my pleasure to turn over to Ms. Brill.
Hello, Board Members, Community. We're happy to have the opportunity to be able to share some of the data, but more importantly, to talk about what we have been doing in response to it and what we hope to continue to do and the new things that we are beginning and want to be doing with, in response. And I think a few things I want to just note before jumping in, you know, one is just that a lot of the data unfortunately is old because of the pandemic and we didn't have us back and those types of pieces. So, some of it is not completely up-to-date data. But I think the bigger piece from my perspective, and you'll see in some of the slides, we have like exact percentages. Others, you could see graphs. But what we're going to, what I'm going to highlight as we're going through it are patterns. And regardless of how old the data is, whether it's a year or whether we're looking three years back, while there's been needles that we have moved over time, the patterns are still patterns that we're, been working hard to address but need to continue that work and continue to add on pieces. um, been working hard to address, but need to continue that work and continue to add on pieces. Um, so this is going to be new for me doing a presentation where I'm not in control of the slides. But, um, why don't we go ahead and, and switch to the next one? Thank you. Okay, so, um, just beginning, um, we're, in terms of the flow of the presentation, I'm going to share some academic data. We're going to be sharing some social emotional data, some, um, some attendance data, some, some suspension data, and then we're going to be talking, um, about responses. Before jumping in, I want to just welcome the members of my team that are here with me tonight. Um, so we have, um, two of our counselors representing our counseling department, Annie Lorix and Kelly Britton. Um, and then we have Will Casin, um, who runs our student success space, um, and also a member of our student service team. And so, um, I'm going to be starting off with the data, but, um, they're going to be working with me to share with you some of our responses to data. So first of all, um, what you're looking at here are our, um, our smarter balanced, our S back results, um, looking at E L A and math, and this is looking at all of our students. And if you, um, I know you've looked at S back data plenty at this point, but, um, basically what you're seeing here are the blue bands, which is the standard exceeded, the green bands is the standard met. Yellow is, um, the standard nearly met, and I think it's important to note, um, when we look at that, that it's a very narrow band. It really means almost there. Um, it, you know, the bands aren't all equal bands. Um, and then the, um, the orangish, um, color, um, is the standard not met. So we have seventy-eight percent or almost seventy-nine in E L A and almost seventy-one percent in math. Change slides. Okay, this next, um, set, um, it, you can't see the number of percentages, and I actually think that that is okay because when we leave our presentation tonight, no one's going to remember the exact percentage for each one of the grade levels and each one of the bands, but we are going to remember our patterns and we're going to remember, um, where we are, um, not meeting as a school what it is that we're needing to meet. And so when we look at economically disadvantaged, I think the, um, what's really helpful is the contrast between this slide and then the next slide you're going to see, which is not economically disadvantaged. So we have approximately an E L A, about a thirty-seventy split here, and then in math, it's, uh, more like a forty-eight fifty-two split. And if you flip to the next slide, you can, you can just see that, that the yellow and, and orange bands are much, much, much smaller, which basically, to me, when I'm looking at that, is saying that what we are doing for our economically disadvantaged students is not enough. Um, and that we're needing to do quite a bit more, um, to, to level that playing field. Can I flip slides, please? Okay, similarly with our special ed students, um, you know, we had a comment just before this from one of our special ed families, and I think it's important, and these are kind of across different schools, across grade levels, across time. Um, we see, um, these, these types, this type of results where our special ed students are not, are not accessing, um, the education in the same way, and we're needing to do more to a level that playing field as well. Next slide, please. English learners. Um, so you can see with the English learners, um, that they're, one thing I will note, so, so again, the, the green and, um, blue bands are smaller for them. One thing that I'm going to draw specific attention to though is math, and one of the things that's happened over the last, oh, I don't know how long this has been now, maybe, maybe six years or so, since we, um, transitioned to Common Core math. It's very language heavy, and so what we used to find with our, um, with our English language learners, their ability to access math, our math curriculum was really different than now where so much of it is about putting math in context, explaining your reasoning, co- questions that ask for a lot of kind of higher, higher level, um, English knowledge in order to access them. And so we have developed a class at our school the last couple of years, which is a math communications class specifically designed to try to help our English learners, um, accessing the language around math. Next slide. Okay, this is, um, breaking down by ethnicity in, in language arts, um, and then, um, ethnicity in, um, math. But what I'd like to do is to, to flip, if we can flip, um, through this one and the next one, the, the, the slide nine goes the same data, but I think in a more, um, digestible way. So let's, we can just go one, one more. One more past that to slide nine. There we go. Thank you. So when we look at our student, um, achievement gap populations, um, what we're, what we're looking at again are, are patterns that, um, I think we are really specifically been targeting and working to address, and we'll talk about that in the next part of the presentation. Um, but patterns that are still there, and one of the things that came up with a board member question that I was, want to draw attention to, um, one of the things that's really tricky with looking at, um, our African-American population and, and data is, and which is why I was flipping through from some of the earlier slides, which we didn't even have grade level data for seventh and eighth grade, and we only could look at it as a whole school because of the population size. And the other thing that, that we're, we come in contact with is, um, for some of our Black or African-American families, um, the identification, um, in areas is two or more races. And so, um, and, and sometimes we've talked to families, you know, you're filling out information on your kid, and which one do you click first, and which one do you click second, and how does that kid get into the system? And so the tracking of that data and why there's a dip in two thousand and nineteen, I think certainly we need to be doing more to address the needs of our Black and African-American students. That's not in question. But specifically to address why there's a dip one year or not, we end up, we're talking with a very small handful of students that are in that group, sometimes a grade level is not even counted, sometimes students aren't even counted, and, and so, um, it, it ends up really shifting dramatically with what that cohort is. You know, of the six students, five of them are in one grade versus another grade, and then they move on to high school, and then you have five more who come in who are new in sixth grade. It's not the same group of students. So I think we see more swinging with that, um, with that data. Uh, but regardless, it, the, the data needs to get addressed. The, the data point still needs to be addressed. That's not in question. Um, you can also, I, uh, I will point out, and a board member also pointed out, the Latinx population, Hispanic Latinx is pretty much holding steady at sixty-six percent. Um, and we, despite different things we have been doing, we're not doing enough to move that needle, and so that's something that needs specific attention. Uh, next slide, please. Um, and this is, you know, so we're looking, um, at math now, and it's very, very similar data, and I would say the same, same thing about that. Look at the next slide. We're going to talk a little bit about attendance rates, so just a different data point. Um, and so you can see the eighteen, nineteen, ninety-six point seven, nineteen twenty, ninety-seven point eight, and twenty twenty-one, which is right now ninety-nine point seven, and there was a question from a board member about what engaged meant. So when we're following the guidelines of distance learning attendance taking that we've been given, basically the way that, um, we mark attendance is there's a tendency marked for Zoom attendance. But, and if a student does not show up in Zoom, but shows up in another way that day at school, submits an assignment to the teacher, shows up at office hours, engages in their learning process in another way with that teacher, then their attendance gets changed to engaged, and that, those were the guidelines that we were given about how we count, um, engagement for students. And so that's what, um, that's what that's counting is that, that, that ninety-nine point seven is either students who have attended the Zoom classes that day or engaged with that teacher in some other way, um, during that time period. Let me switch slides, please. This is, um, attendance rates from the two thousand and nineteen until we went on quarantine last year, so this is not distance learning. This is our last year's in-person education, and you can see the breakdown, in terms of our, um, ethnicities. You can see Pacific Islanders showing up as particularly low. Um, and we can see our Black, um, African-American students at ninety-four point six-three, which is two percentage points below our average. Hispanic Latino, one percentage point below our average, most notably. Next slide, please. We have two pages of our suspension rate data. Um, one is from two years ago, and the other is from last year. We don't have any suspension date, data this year because there is no suspending students since everybody is at home. So, um, however, this year has given us a great opportunity to start reworking our discipline system, and I think in a really fundamental way, and I'm excited to share that information with you in our next, um, once we move past the data pieces of this. But basically what you're seeing here, um, I think the last two columns can be a little confusing because what that's talking about is the percentage um, of the student, of those students who were suspended, how much of it was one versus multiple? So it can, that can be a little misleading, I think. Um, what's most helpful is looking at the, um, the column third from the, third from the right where it says suspension rate. So you can see the, um, eleven, eleven percent basically of our African-American population had been suspended. Two percent of the Asian population, seven percent of, um, South Islander, four percent white, six point nine percent two or more race. And so, again, there's some disproportionality that we're, we're seeing there as well. And if you flip to the next slide, this was our last year's data. Um, what we see is, um, a, uh, there's some, some, some differences between them. So our African-American suspension rate was lower, Black African-American, our Hispanic suspension, it was one percentage higher, so it's all, you know, some, you know, some minor changes in there. Okay, next slide, we have our healthy kid data. And, um, with our healthy kid data, what we're looking at, um, and this is something that the only, this is the only data point we have for social emotional learning, and that's something that we've been looking into and looking into, and I think, um, this year with the adoption of FastBridge, which is, um, what we're going to be doing three times a year for reading and math assessments. We'll have much more up-to-date data moving forward that we can control, so it's very exciting. Um, they also do have a social emotional, um, component that we're going to be looking into using because we've been really wanting to be able to collect social emotional data in a more regular way. And as a school where we can really work with the data very easily and break it down, the healthy kid data is a little harder to do that with. Um, and so basically what we see is, um, seven percent of our students saying, um, reporting feeling unsafe or very unsafe. Um, twenty-eight percent feeling neutral about it, fifty-two percent reporting safe, and thirteen percent reporting very safe. The next slide, um, what it, what the Healthy Kids Survey does is they have a compilation of questions that all feeds into a particular category. And so these questions, these categories is not just one question, um, like the last, um, the last one. It's a number of different questions that go into whether we, how much we deem a student feels that they're, that they agree or strongly agree that they're caring adults at the school who, who they feel like care for them, that the adults at the school have high expectations for them, um, that there is, um, that they have a feeling of school connectedness, that they um, have a feeling of academic motivation. And I think we were working a number of years back, um, where we would get the raw data from Healthy Kids Survey and hire a data analysis who would work through it, who could really break this down by race, ethnicity, and those pieces, which I think is really essential because similar to our aspect, if you just look at us as a school, we're welcoming it to other schools, we're doing pretty well. But if you think about whether we're really meeting the needs of all our students, and you drill down into race and ethnicity, socioeconomic, we're really not meeting the needs of our students in the way we need to be. And I think similarly, when we're looking at, um, social emotional data, there, there's parallels there. We know that for kids to learn effectively, they need to feel safe. They need to feel like someone cares about them. They need to feel connected to their school. We know those things really have a huge impact on kids' ability to learn in school. It's not just, I think people used to look at social emotional sort of like, oh, that's the fluffy stuff, but now we really know it's not. It's, you know, like, you can't, we can't expect kids to learn if they don't feel safe and connected. So one of the things that's exciting about looking at this FastBridge option is that we could just really quickly get the breakdown of the data. How are we doing based on race, ethnicity? How are we doing with socioeconomic? How are we doing with gender, like all of those different pieces? Um, so, um, the next slide is going to be moving us from looking at what the data is to what we're doing about the data. Um, and so I want to just say a couple of quick things and, and have a team of people who are going to be helping me present that piece. Um, and so first of all, one thing that I just, I want to start off with is that I feel that, um, in terms of the patterns that we've seen in this data, that I think we really have a strong belief as a school that it's our responsibility if our students are not meeting the standards, if our students are not feeling connected, if our students are, um, are, if we're, are not, if we're not meeting all of our students' needs in an equal way, that that is our obligation to be addressing, you know, to be fixing the right, to kind of right the wrongs of what our system is, to find a way to be doing it differently. And I think that, um, we've had a lot of conversations and done a lot of work at the school to figure out how do we keep moving the needle, and I think we're really starting to have some bigger conversations of like, how do we just turn it on its head? You know, because we know we're working within a school system that was set up to be inequitable, and we're trying to make changes within that system, and we're trying very hard, but it's not enough. And so I think, um, we're all feeling really, we're really working hard as a school community, and we have an equity committee that we are working with, that we're going to be working with throughout this year, that's really looking at, we've already been doing some things, we've added some new things this year, what, when we, let's use this opportunity while we're at home to think about when we come back, what's going to be different? Um, and so the last thing that I'll say before I turn it over is that, um, when we look at how we're addressing these different pieces, and there was a board member question about like, how does affinity groups, for example, or advisory programs fit into addressing achievement gap in an academic way? And I, I think it kind of goes back to what I was saying before, that we're looking at a three-pronged approach. We are looking at certainly addressing academics in its own right. If a student is below grade level math, what are we doing to bring them up to grade level in math, right? What are we doing in terms of the academic piece of it? But we also are saying for the student populations who are not performing as well, what are we doing to make sure they feel a part of the school? What are they doing to make sure they feel like this is their school that they're connected to, that, um, adults care about them, adults believe in them, adults know that they can do it, they feel connected to other kids who they feel are a part of their community? What are we doing to make sure they feel a part of? Because we know that impacts learning. Um, and then the other piece of it is around, um, teachers and staff and administration and all of us who work at the school. What are we doing to continue to work on our own thinking and our own approaches to making, um, to shifting our ideas about how we work with students to make sure that every single one of our students feels from us that sense of caring and connectedness, and that we are, um, designing and redesigning our school in a way that's going to meet the needs of all of our students. So, um, this next set of slides is going to be talking about some of these responses. Um, and we, um, have, um, Ms. Lorix, Ms. Britton, and Mr. Casin, and myself, who are going to be going through these together. So I believe, Mr. Casin, are you first?
Yes, on this tremendous Tuesday evening to the board and also Dr. Wells, thanks for having us. This presentation this evening allowed us to share with you the, um, the impact of Albany Middle School that I know is the best school on the planet. And just start off with the, um, affinity groups. This started off as a mentoring program for students, and it transferred into and transformed into affinity program that meets once a month. Also, uh, the student-led and student-focused, student-driven. With the affinity group, when we look at African-American students and Latinx students, we know that this is a place where they can build community, have connections with caring adults, but also another
Go back a slide? Can we just stay on the last slide?
Also a way that they can embrace their own culture. And when we talk about the achievement gap and achievement opportunities for students, we know the importance of students having that connection, having that care, but also being able to create and embrace their culture and also have a safe supportive community within their school campus at AMS. So as I mentioned, it started off as mentoring, and it transferred and transformed into affinity group that's student, um, focused and student-centered, and also that's coordinated by, um, our teachers, and this is multiple grade levels across the curriculum.
Thanks, Mr. C. Hi, I'm Annie Lorix. I'm a seventh grade counselor at Albany Middle School. Um, so as we aim to bridge the student academic achievement gap, we want to do that through connection and building community like, um, Principal Brill said. So we want our students to feel that they belong. We want them engaged, and we want them to feel safe and motivated to learn. And research has shown that school-based social emotional learning programs promote student connection to school, um, promote more positive feelings about school, and really improve academic achievement. And so last year, we piloted an advisory program with these goals in mind. Um, this was a cross-grade level program where we had sixth, seventh, and eighth graders um, meet with the same teacher weekly. And the intent was to have them keep the same group to build community. And as the eighth graders would graduate, the new sixth graders would shift into that group. Um, and, and the intent was to have, um, this program continue on so that students could build a really strong rapport with an adult on campus and with each other, even if that adult was not one of their teachers. And so together, they would, uh, participate in getting to know each other activities, discussions, play games, build regulation tools and communication skills. And so again, the intent was for us to continue with this program. And then Shelter in Place happened, and we fell into distance learning. And so we made an intention And so we made an intentional shift then from our advisory program into a Friday community building program. And so this is in response to the need for both students and teachers to have a chance to build class cohesion and community outside of their curriculum. With again, the intent to foster connection, especially through distance learning. Classes would rotate. So for instance, this Friday, every single fifth period will meet with their class and their teacher for forty five minutes. And they'll participate in different community building activities and discussions and games.
Another exciting piece that we want to share with you this evening is our student success space and we refer to it as S three. And through distance learning, we've really transformed the way that we engage with students. And we've created multiple videos that happens each day that inspire students. One, two, that provides students with coping techniques if they're dealing with stress, anxiety. And also it helps with the emotional regulation as we look at social emotional learning, how students, one, manage their own personal emotion. How do they create an awareness and empathy within a community? But also one of the key factors is how do they develop a success action plan by gaining these tools? So we do this through the video series that happens on YouTube or when students come to the platform of Google Classroom with social emotional needs and concerns, they can visit the S three and each day they have a different type of technique or a different word of encouragement when it comes to internal or external motivation that they can build upon. And just, you know, really quick, even before I got on logged on tonight for Zoom, I was checking emails and one student just reached out and said, hey, Mr. C, I'm concerned about another one of my friends, my peers. That seems like they may be experiencing some depression. And with the way that we engage with students through Zoom and through the Google Classroom now, it's opportunities where students can set up one-on-one or we do small group discussions with me. And that's another example of building that community, community connection, embracing culture, but also students having that awareness and empathy for their peers. And another thing that we do is multiple groups. I call these my connect and chat groups where students form on a weekly basis across the grade levels. Where we spend thirty five minutes talking about skills, but also it's student-led and student-driven. It's an open discussion that students can talk about things that they may be concerned with. And we have our young men's support group that's happening again this year as well too. So these are ways as we talk about addressing the achievement and opportunity gap for students, building that community. Even though we're doing it virtually now at a distance with students, we're still remaining heavily connected through collaboration with students and also engaging families. One of the things I'll close with now is I mentioned about engaging with families. I'm spending time with families either through Zoom or personal phone calls. Families are seeing how the impact of some students feel when it comes to the distance learning piece or the technology when they're in front of their computers for a large amount of time. And they say, what are some different things that we can do to stay engaged, to stay motivated? And to stay productive through this phase that we're faced with? So Rex, thank you.
Yeah, so our counseling model for the past four years is that every grade has one counselor. And a big thank you to school care for helping us do this. So we as counselors, we loop with our students and work with the same students and families from sixth through eighth grade. And this allows us to develop a deeper and more personalized relationship with our students and families. We have an increased awareness of the needs of our students. We can provide more targeted interventions throughout the years and really get an understanding of who our student is as a learner and get a sense of where their social, emotional, academic strengths are and also where their areas of growth are. So we can really support these as they evolve throughout middle school and we prepare them for high school. Building this rapport and working with our students through the years also help us serve as liaisons between students and teachers. Most importantly, it's been so helpful for distance learning. So for instance, take the seventh graders. I got to know them as sixth graders as they were learners in school. And then I experienced the shelter in place shift with them in March. And, and now have helped transition and support them into our distance learning model. So it's also nice because every single conversation that a student, a parent has with their counselor, it's, it's a continuation from a previous conversation. So we're building upon these conversations and evolving rather than having another introductory conversation and having to rehash history. And then just lastly, I want to say with distance learning for us counselors, it's been really nice to collaborate more with parents and provide support. A lot of what Mr. C was referencing that has crossed over into counseling as well. And, and it's, it's really nice because we can, you know, moving forward, we can really continue to build off of these strong foundational relationships. So I'm going to pass it on over to Ms. Britton.
To me. All right. Thank you, Ms. Lorix. Good evening, board. My name is Kelly Britton. I am the current sixth grade counselor. And I'm going to go through a couple of the different academic supports. So the first one is math and reading support. So we do have math and reading support classes for sixth, seventh and eighth grade students that are in addition to their math and English classes. And we do use multiple points of data to determine what students would be placed into the class, how they would exit the class. And we do communicate consistently throughout the year to try and make sure that, you know, we're providing this intervention to students. And that way, again, we're checking criteria and data to see, are they ready to exit out of the class? And it is an elective class for seventh and eighth grade, or it's in place of an elective class. Additionally, intensive counseling, checking and academic support. You know, Ms. Lorix was kind of mentioning this, we, distance learning has been a big change for students and families and also the way that we are being able to provide our counseling services. But I think we've really, you know, what they say pivoted, we've adapted, adjusted. And I think that, you know, it can look like a couple of different things, you know, we've, it's, you know, the executive functioning components of distance learning have been very, very challenging, I think, for students and parents and just everybody involved. And so like an example of some of the things that we've done are we've created a daily and weekly personalized schedule for students that has their classes, their links in it. That way it takes some of these executive functioning pieces out of it in terms of the work. And again, we can personalize it for the students that we're meeting. You know, I think we've also held fall parent teacher conferences, which had parents, teachers, students and counselors. And that was a great time to also check in on some of the students that were really needing some academic support this first quarter. Something new that, as I was talking about, we've kind of pivoted, something new that we started this year is we as a counseling team have really collaborated and worked on a monthly toolkit that we're providing students and parents. And that is posted on our website. It also gets emailed out to students and families. And I know teachers sometimes reference it. And really the idea of this toolkit was just to take a short snippet video, you know, something short that students and families have the bandwidth to watch. And basically pick a topic that we're noticing is coming up amongst all the grade levels. So in September, we recorded a few videos about coping skills and breathing, trying to navigate some of the way we respond to the stressors in our life. You know, October was about progress reports. And when progress reports come out, what is the information you're seeing? What does it mean? What are some of the good things we can take from it? And what are some of the things that are works in progress? And then November, we just did one on Google Calendar and how does, how that can support our learning? Because I think Google Calendar is really helpful and we were noticing that we were having these discussions a lot with families and students. And so, you know, we hope to keep those up. And that's kind of a school-wide thing that we're doing to help provide academic support. And obviously we can reference it with specific like students that we meet with. Cobra Study. So Cobra Study was an elective class for seventh and eighth grade students. And it was put in place the past three or four years as a way to support students who needed support with either executive functioning or study skills help as well as just additional time to work on things. And so as a result of budget cuts, that was one of the things that was removed this past year. So it is not a seventh and eighth grade elective this year. So labs, labs open all day. So again, I'm kind of going to reference last year and this year because we've had to kind of adjust how we provide the support. So last year we had a classroom and all of the lab classes were held in it different periods. And then additionally, there was a staff member in there during the periods that there was not a lab. And the goal was for that to be as a classroom that was open, not only to hold the lab classes, but also to be as a place to provide support for students who had IEPs and needed additional support with different things throughout the day. This year, what it looks like is we have a Zoom classroom. It's available every day during asynchronous learning time where we have paraprofessionals and students can drop in and they can get additional support the same way they would as they would go to during the actual, you know, when we were in school, the actual classroom setting. And so this is again, during asynchronous learning time. So this is in addition to the lab classes that students may already have on their schedule. I'm going to pass it to Deb to talk about our awesome new Cobra tutoring.
Yeah. So one of the responses, both for the distance learning piece and trying to bridge some of the gaps around access. We know some families are able to hire tutors and hire people to help their kids along with the work and other families are not. And additionally, just kind of looking at our data and our need to be better addressing the needs of our socio-economically disadvantaged students. One of the things that we put in place is Cobra tutoring, working with our PTA or on funding, thank you, PTA. And what we've done is we have a free tutoring program. It's on Zoom. We hired someone who is wonderful and has a lot of experience with running tutoring programs. And then we recruited a bunch of high school students. And she worked with our high school students and trained them and the counseling department and myself and Kat supported her with that. And then, and then she opens up the Zoom session and matches kids and high school kids and middle school students for tutoring. And some of them have regular schedules where they come all the time, others drop in when they need help. But it's a really wonderful way to, I think, both have the connection between high school and middle school students, which is a really nice mentoring piece. And then to give these students some free tutoring support. And we have about twenty students participating. I think so far the estimation was about a hundred and fifty free hours of tutoring so far. And we're just looking at continuing to build the program and keeping it going as a model, even when we are no longer distant. So it's been, it's been a really successful piece. And we can go ahead and move on to the next slide. Thank you. And so really looking at focusing on the whole child, I mentioned before, kind of our three prongs of approach. And one of the pieces is around staff development. And you know, I think we can all understand and recognize that we, every person who comes to work with kids brings with them their own experiences, their own sets of biases, their own ways that they grew up doing education. And so I know our, our staff, our teachers work really hard to meet the needs of all of our students. And we can continue to broaden all of our tool chest, tool chests by continuing to do professional development work. And so last year we had a person that we worked with Candice Fowles well all last year, who worked on culturally responsive teaching and trauma-informed practices. And so every month we would do work on this and then we would go off and do some pieces, bring it back and do more work. We also have been doing work related to equity, which is both involves kind of, kind of deeper pieces of looking at our own identities and, and communication, as well as looking at what the impact is on, on our students. And this year we're really focusing a lot on the, the system, the school as a system. And what it was, how, what it was created for and what it is continuing to do and the patterns that we saw in the data earlier. How our school system was really designed to create those inequitable patterns and what are we doing to disrupt those patterns? And so we've been doing a lot of really, I think, having a lot of really brave conversations as a school of, of like, not just theoretically talking about equity, but like here at our school, what's, what are we doing? What's not working? No one's intending to do this, but this is a system we're part of. So what are we going to do about that? Okay, I'll turn it over to the next person.
All right. So back to me, if we can just go back one more side, sorry. Yeah. So I'm going to speak a little bit about just a couple of the other kind of supports that we have in place amongst us that are, are all collaborative. And so the first one is student services. You know, we do this once a week. It's a really, really excellent time, I think, to combine a lot of different staff members that interact or have, you know, conversations or engage with students and families. And so it's the counselors, mental health, it's Mr. C, it's our school psychologist, it's our administrators. And it is a time that we get to collaborate weekly just to figure out and just to figure out how to support students. Like let's say a few of us have been working with the same student. It's a really great time for us to be able to not only collaborate, but touch base and also figure out what other next steps there are or what we can continue doing. And just make sure that there's consistency, make sure there's consistency in that something doesn't get dropped or there's not something that goes a certain amount of time without being addressed. Deb, I'm going to pivot to you about the student action team, which is something that we're kind of, is newer this year, something we're adding.
Yeah. So one of the things when we're really looking at the inequitable patterns of our school and really schools across this country, suspension rates is something that, that comes up. And, you know, while we've done a lot of work around looking at, at our response to behaviors and then also just, you know, I think how we create classroom spaces that can prompt behavior. So it's, it's, it's a lot of different pieces. But I think one of the things that's really important is as we look at behavior that we look at it from the point of view of educators. And our job, when a student is not doing well in math, we don't punish them for not doing well in math. We help them to do better in math. Right? And that's, and then we put in extra supports, extra interventions, reteaching, whatever is needed. And so really looking at behavior through the same lens of a student is acting out in some way that is getting them referred to the office, there's a reason for that. And so what are we doing to actually address the reason for that? And how do we, and, and it could be looking at what the root is and there's some root that needs to be addressed. It could be that a student has a need for attention and that's the way they're getting attention. They need to be taught a different way to get attention. But regardless, that our job is to educate, not to punish. And sometimes consequences are part of educating. So I'm not saying we're getting rid of consequences. But sometimes we give consequences because that's what we are told we're supposed to do in schools. A student does this, that we suspend, even when it doesn't make sense. And so we're really trying to look at this in a, in a different way. And so what we're doing is we have a referral form that, that can get filled out by anybody on our staff. That's not an office referral form. It's a student concern referral. We have a concern about the student and the concern could be related to their behavior. It could be related to a lack of engagement. It could be related to not turning work in. It could be something that would normally go to a counselor, something that would normally go to Mr. C, something that would normally go to administrator. But then we're looking, and then we are reviewing that form as a team that involves counselors, administrators and teachers, if they are available and wanting to be involved, if they were part of that referral. And so far teachers have all wanted to be involved. And so, and then we're taking that and then really looking at like, what was the behavior? What was the cause or function of the behavior? And then what are we going to do to address the behavior? And I think it's going to really shift the way that it's a great time to start because behaviors are really different right now, but we'll go back to school and we'll be back in a school setting. And so then what are, so we'll be able to really translate this to a school setting and really address behaviors from a very different perspective where our goal is what it should, what it, what it should be, which is that we want the behavior to change. Like if it's a behavior that's not helpful for that student in their learning process, how do we help them with that? How do we educate them? So I'm really excited about this, this new process. And we've been working really hard as a staff to develop kind of the flow chart, the, the process. And we're, you know, we're still, we're still getting it ironed out, but what a great time to be working on getting it ironed out where, when, when the behaviors are much lower level. So.
Principal Brill, as you were speaking, one of the things that, you know, that this has given us an opportunity to do is that now we can look at what are some of those risk factors that students are faced with? And now being able, as you mentioned, flipping things over, how can we mitigate some of those risk factors and set up places of success for students or get upstream now and offset some of those? We have as a team have collaborated more now through this distance learning that we're touching bases sometime three, four times a day on meeting the needs of students. And it's given us this opportunity that we can be proactive now, that we have things in place as a school, as a team, as a, as a staff that we can not only embrace and provide the needs for students, but their students have multiple relationships, multiple services in which they can get their needs met. So this has been a perfect opportunity how we can offset and provide students with some protective factors now as we look at those risk factors and set them up on the pathway for success.
Yes. Thanks, Mr. C.
Thanks, Mr. C. Thanks, Miss Brill. So moving to the next one, Student Success Team, it's a little bit different. If you can just go back one more slide. Thank you. So Student Success Team, also known as an SST. So that is a little bit more geared towards when there is a concern maybe about a student's learning or academics and it is a team. So it's the teachers, it's the parent, it's the counselor, sometimes the school psychologist. And it is a team. So it's the teachers, it's the parent, it's the counselor, sometimes the school psychologist. And it really focuses on looking at some of the past educational data, educational history. And it also looks at kind of looking at RTI, like response intervention. What are some different interventions that we can try and put in place? Whether it's like an incentive charter, whether it's a different like accommodation or something that we want to look at to see how we can support the student. And so those are still happening. Five oh fours and IEPs at the middle school, the each grade level counselor is the case manager for their grade level five oh fours. And then for IEPs, there is also a special education case manager for those grade level IEPs. And again, those are things where we're all communicating as a team with the teachers, with the parents, with the students and working together to navigate everything academic, everything social, emotional, all of the different components, especially with this year for distance learning, really being kind of like a strong team to make sure that we're not letting anything drop, or not anything fall. So we still have all of those structures put in place to support students. And yeah, we're still continuing those. All right. So we can go to the next slide now.
So with distance learning, one of the things we worry about and want to prevent is for our students to feel disconnected and alienated. And, and we don't want any of them to feel alone. So we've been working really hard at keeping students socially connected. So just circling back to the Friday community building, this is where students engage in activities that foster connection and build a sense of belonging. The Friday community buildings are fundamentally social, which is critical during distance learning and also during these developmental years. Social connections key to their wellness and their healthy development. And we really wanted to ensure that all students had this built into their week, especially during distance learning. And so in terms of counseling, we offer something called Cobra chats. And so we query the students' interest and about 40 to 70 students per grade level, different in each grade level, they wanted to participate. And so those who've expressed interest are invited to a weekly Cobra chat. And the Cobra chats are loosely structured groups that are student directed, but they lean more towards unstructured school time. So like a lunchtime or a passing period or conversations that could happen during break. And so we wanted to give students an opportunity to be in a school setting without that academic piece, where they could be social and build connections, play games, meet new friends. And it's also been a really great space for us to support new students to AMS, to help them connect to the AMS community.
All right. And, and similar to the grade level Cobra chats, I want to say the past three years, we have done lunch crew, past two or three years, we've done lunch crew. And it's similar to what Ms. Loris described. It's, you know, when we were on campus, it was up in the counseling office. It would be at lunchtime, it'd be once a week. And it really is also a space when we're on campus for students who may be overwhelmed by the unstructured time or maybe unsure of what to do or where to go or how to plan their unstructured time, so to speak. It's a great opportunity to, like Ms. Lor said, come in, have kind of a smaller setting, be able to play games, be able to relax, be able to figure out and talk about where you want to go, what you want to do, and also meet new people. And so we still are offering lunch crew through Zoom this year. And one thing we've kind of noticed is I think because we have some of these other social emotional pieces or we have some of these other social opportunities, we actually have noticed a reduction in the students that attend lunch crew. But I think a majority of those students that are attending lunch crew are now attending the grade level Cobra chat. So it's kind of cool to see things transition, but I did want to share what that looks like on campus. And it really is a great time of day. I really enjoy our lunch crews.
And then we have the Cobra Connect and Chat. So to our board and also Dr. Wells, I'd like for you to do two things. One is write in a motion, a feeling that you have right now, whatever that is, you write it down. I'm not going to require a request for you to share it. And then the second thing I'd like for you to do, after you write that emotional feeling down, I would like for you to write down, what is your hope for tomorrow, an expectation that you have? So when we look at the My Connect and Chat, the Cobra Connect and Chat, social group for students, those are some things that we work on, say yay, you know, we work on what's that inspiration, that hope? Because we know from development of children, that hope and expectation is a key for success, but also being able to identify our feelings and our emotion to say, I feel, and whatever that feeling is, to take ownership and hold on to that space. And we've created this and it's by Principal Brill, you know, with her vision for this one. We've created this connection for students all across grade levels. And we run four groups a week for eight weeks. And we talk about different things from coping to emotion. And also it's open for students to have their own discussion of what they would like to speak about. We talk about our awareness of what's going on around us in our world, the global impact of the social unrest. We talk about what's going on in our school community. And after each of our engagements, and it's amazing, I don't know if you can see them behind me now. These are some inspirational words right here, but after each engagement, every week, students email me one powerful positive word of, about themselves. So it's developing that self-identity and feeling good about who you are, developing your voice, not only to be able to stand up, but also to stand out. And that's what the connection in the chats are all about. And as I was mentioning earlier about an email that I received just before jumping on this Zoom from a student, that student is a new student to our school and that student is a part of this Connect and Chat social group. And they just reached out and said, hey, look, this is what one of my friends are experiencing. And so of course I did the proper protocols for that email on to our school administrator. And to reach out to that student says, hey, thank you for being a caring, concerned friend and thank you for reaching out. And one of the things to close with this one, when we look at things are in place, as I mentioned, being able to be proactive. Students now says, hey, I want to, I'm going to go to Mr. Lorix, you know, group, I'm just checking in with you, Mr. C. And last week someone says, hey, Mr. C, I got to get off our, our Zoom in five minutes. So I got to go see Mrs. Britton. And what it does is showing students that we have a close knit community with our school and how we work well together. But being able to have multiple ways that students can engage and feel excited about school, embrace their culture, but also have a place that they can connect, a safe, caring adult on campus. But now they have multiple caring adults on campus and groups that they can engage with.
All right. So I'll finish up with the last bullet point, which is clubs. And if we can go to the next slide, it'll show some examples. So clubs are awesome. I think they are probably one of our most popular things that students really enjoy. And so you can see some examples here. There's afternoon tea, which is pretty creative. Anime is a huge club. Students really like that. Best buddies event, drama, Jewish Muslim club, Dungeons and Dragons, garden club, GSA, jazz band, Cobra Critters, Magic the Gathering, Science Olympia, Team Avatar, Technology, Macrame, which is really cool. Actually dropped in on that club as well. And so to give you an idea, 325 of our students participate in these clubs, which is a really large amount and students very much enjoy it. There's great topics. And these are clubs that are run by teachers as well, which is another great way to have a positive adult connection at school through something that isn't technically academic, but is something that they enjoy.
I just want to give like a big shout out to our teachers who I know already like are so, Heather Plait's so full trying to do distance learning and then in their spare time are running, running these clubs for students. And some of these came about from teachers creating them and some of them came about from a student going to a teacher and saying, hey, I want this club to happen. Will you be, will you sponsor it? So it's pretty neat. And we have one final slide. Y'all ready for the finale? Technology. So obviously, technology became really important, really fast with distance learning. And we have a really nice process in place at our school. If students need equipment, families need equipment, whether it's a Chromebook or a hotspot or headphones or something like that. We have a Google form they can fill out or they can just email us, whichever one they do. And, and we've been checking them out. We've checked them out to every single family who's asked for it. And then we've also have a process where if a teacher is like, you know, we'll reach out and be like, hey, the student is continually getting kicked out of Zoom from because their wifi is not working well enough. Or hey, we can't hear this student. Can you please order them a pair of headphones with a better mic? Whatever it is, we're making sure. And then we're reaching out to those families. And if the family can't come down for some reason, we're dropping it off on their porch for them. We're making sure that they get them however they need to. And then similarly, if, if there's challenges, if there's tech challenges, we have a few different things we've done. One is we've created some how-to videos that are really specific to our school and the technology we're using. Our ed tech TSA has run, been running some different support things recently for students. Like, hey, students, if you need help with Zoom, I'm going to have office hours in these days and teachers can refer or the kids can just self-select. And if there are ongoing tech issues, our assistant principal, Melissa Floresca, has been amazing with taking time out to handhold and walk families through whatever tech issue they need. If they, and if kids can't find links, they're going to their counselors. And then our amazing tech team, our AUSD tech team has been fabulous when, when it's something that we just can't address and they have stepped in and really, really supported families. So I feel like overall, we've got a great system in place. It's not perfect. Cause technology doesn't, doesn't stay consistent, but we, we have a lot in place to really support families with that. So we're grateful for the various layers throughout our district. And that is the conclusion of our presentation. So if anybody has questions, we can answer this.
Thank you so much, Principal Brill. I'll open this up to questions from the board. And then after board questions, we'll move to questions from the community. I believe that trustee Hinckley's hand was up first. Please go ahead and then trustee Doss after that.
I think it might've been Brian, actually. I heard him start to talk before I put my hand up.
Oh, no worries. Leggies first. Go right ahead, trustee Hinckley.
All right. So I don't know if we want to do this kind of how we did last time where we don't ask all our questions at once, but we kind of go around. But I'll, so I'll mention a few, two or three things. So first, I just want to express my appreciation for the presentation. You know, two things that really struck me were one, your statement, Principal Brill of, you know, we take a lot of responsibility for these gaps and we don't just accept them. And, you know, that we're always trying new things and that we don't just sort of look at these numbers and those disparities and say, so be it. So I really appreciate you being really explicit about this being all of our responsibility. I would like to hear more about what strategies or how the board could support efforts that you are thinking about in order to continue to try to close those gaps or identify, you know, why they're happening and, and what's worked in the past or if there are things you want to try, but you feel like there needs to be action from the board to sort of, you know, with funding or other policies. So that's the question piece. But before you answer, I also just wanted to say, I really appreciate hearing the sort of whole team approach. And I really appreciate the investments that we've made in the counseling staff, both the district and the, and school care, as you called out. So that's just really impressive. So I would like to hear some about your thoughts about how to close that gap. And a related question is, you know, we've talked as a board before about the math gap and how it begins. That's sort of the one area in AUSD where we do, you know, sort of track students. And in terms of actually having different math classes and math levels. And that starts in eighth grade at the high, at the middle school. And so I, I don't know if you can describe now, if you've, you know, if you're sort of keeping track of data or other ways to think about, you know, when we create that advanced math class in eighth grade, that sort of sets some trajectories for high school, even if they're not ironclad. But could you talk a little bit about your thoughts on how, you know, whether that is a good strategy? Whether there are ways to ensure that students are not getting pigeonholed wrongly? And just your thoughts about that in the same context is how we think about the, some of these gaps.
Yeah. So maybe I'll just start with the math piece, you know? And I, I think one of the things that we really tackled hard prior to Common Core was it used to be at our school that, that students were tracked early on in math. And if they needed support in math, it just meant they went to a slower math class. So starting in sixth grade, you couldn't get out of that track because you're getting further and further behind in the curriculum. So that was the first change we made where every kid would get access to a general math class. And then we would have supplemental support class, which did mean they lose an elective. So it's not, you know, it's not perfect. But what that did ensure was that every kid was getting access to the gen ed curriculum and then in the class to help support them in being successful in that curriculum. And then when we switched to the Common Core, I mean, and then we used to still have accelerated classes. We had a group of, you know, maybe 60 kids who would, you know, be in geometry by, by eighth grade. And when we transitioned to Common Core, we made a very intentional decision to detract our math at the middle school. You look at almost all of the other comparable middle schools, that's not the case. And it was a, it was, I think, a pretty bold decision on the part of our staff and, and a lot of our parent community and speaking up with it too, which I really appreciated. And, and I think when we, so it means in sixth and seventh grade, it's all heterogeneous. And we're really looking at math in a different way. It used to be math was all about how fast can you get it? And it's not anymore. You know, it's, it's, and we really have a philosophy as a middle school. Doesn't matter if it takes a kid three times to learn something. If they've learned it, they've learned it. You know, as adults, we're not judging each other for like, did you pass your driver's test on the first time? When you were a teenager, you know how to drive now. So you know how to drive. We don't look at each other differently, right? And so I think that piece is really important. In eighth grade, we do have Math Aid and Math Aid Challenge. I, I will say that they're not tracked classes. They don't cover different standards. They cover the same set of standards. The Math Aid Challenge is more challenging. It goes, it goes a little further, a little deeper, more challenging tests, more challenging problems. But we made an intentional choice to not have that be a class that would set kids on a track. So from either class, you can access any of the high school math classes. And so we don't see that as a track class, although, you know, you, you can argue it as two different groups of students that are, are in push. And then the other piece I will say about that is that we do have criteria for how we place kids in the math in terms of which we, which class we think they'll feel the most successful in. Or we want them to gain a strong foundation in math. We want them to gain a lot of confidence in math. And when there are appeals, basically my conversation with that family is here's all the reasons why we think your kid will be more successful and gain more confidence and more foundation in this class they're in. But ultimately, we don't hold a kid in, in that space. If a family feels strongly, they want their kid in the other class, then that's what we do. And so, so just in terms of the math. And then in terms of your other question, I really appreciate that question. And it said, we have an equity committee that's going to be meeting throughout this year to really try to look at. We have a lot of kind of smaller changes we're making, such as the Cobra tutoring. I really want to look at like, when we go, when we're back in person, if we have a kid who is below grade level math, like how can we like target, target, target that, you know, math tutoring? Not just like, hey, do you need help with your homework? But like, we have the fast bridge assessments that we're going to be using. Where are the gaps? How are we going to fill in the gaps? So I think in terms of support from the board, we're really going to be looking to, to, we don't want to be giving three assessments each year in math. Three assessments are really adding all this assessment in without actually doing something about it, right? So we're going to really be looking for adding in additional layers of targeted tutoring in response to the assessments. That's one piece. And then the other thing that we're really looking at is as a school, we've been working on how, on our curriculum and how do we integrate in, you know, more kind of real world pieces? How do we integrate in historical pieces that are not represented as much as we want them to be? How do we enter into social justice curriculum, all of those pieces? And so that is another thing that we often feel a little held back with in the sense that it, it involves more FD. And so that's a funding piece too. So, you know, but what we'll do is keep Dr. Wells apprised of our equity committee and new ideas and thoughts we have. And I'm sure he can be in touch with all of you about what that looks like.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. And I want to move now to trustee Doss. And I also just want to say that I'm, I'm simply going by the way that Zoom sorts people on the right-hand bar. So I, I heard trustee Doss speak too, and I was surprised to see that trustee Hinckley was listed as already having her hand raised. So, so I'm sorry about that. And I didn't mean to cut you off, trustee Doss.
No, no problem at all. I have a few questions, but I'm just going to ask one this time around and then give other trustees an opportunity. My question is surrounding how we are informing students of all these great programs. As you were talking about some of the programs, I got like four text messages from parents that were like, they hadn't heard of that program, but they want their kids to participate. So I'm wondering if you guys could speak a little bit about how kids are informed? And if there can be like another round of emails or maybe targeting specific students? For example, all of the black students being in, to the Infinity Group or all of the, you know, things, things like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Portman Doss, for the question. Yeah, so our primary means of communication has been through email, sending out, you know, Cobra, Cobra updates to our families. And I think I know everybody is like over inundated with emails. We try to send things out a couple of times, but we'll, we will be having another round. Like our social groups was like, we had kids sign up for like sessions. And then we're going to sign up for another rounds. We'll put that out. Certainly the pieces with the counselors are talking about, we can advertise that again. The Cobra Tutoring specifically, we started off small because we wanted to make sure that we got all the protocols and everything in place. We started off by targeting students that we already knew could benefit or families that had brought up to us like, hey, we really need some support or we know that the kid needs support, whatever it is. But we are at a point now where it's, the, the program's feeling really solid. And I've been in contact with the person running it and we are about to open it up further. So, so I think in answer to your question, that's how we've been communicating. And yes, I can, I can put together kind of more comprehensive email now that we have. We've been building all these pieces in place this year. And so I can definitely send something out to the parent community saying, hey, these are some different social ways that your kids can get support. Here's some academic ways your kids can get support. And here's who to reach out to. So I will, I will make sure that that happens within the next week.
And also to ask that one too, Portman Doss, thank you for that question. Is that on the website, we're keeping information updated on the website along with the videos. And as Principal Brill mentioned about the Cobra newsletters that go out. So if parents can get information about the groups, as we mentioned about S3 or videos that takes place for students' toolbox or toolkits, that's all on the website listed as well.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And kind of President Trutain, just kind of circle back around later on in the evening.
Sure will. We'll move now to Vice President Duran. Go ahead.
Okay, I also will just ask a couple of questions at this moment and, and then come back afterwards. Ms. Brill, you started off by throwing out a very provocative question, which is how do we move the needle in a system that is not equitable? How do we disrupt that system? And so throughout the, the presentation, I was trying to hear some answers to that. This is not to dismiss everything that you and your staff is doing. You have a lot of things, a lot of support for the students. But I'm just wondering if, if we could go back to that question. And how is AMS really disrupting? How, what is different to address the, this inequitable system? So that's my first question.
Yeah, thank you. Welcome that question. I think, yeah, so I, I think I would offer two answers to that. I mean, I think the first is that there are some things that are a given, some things that we have in place. We have a school system with a certain amount of funding, with a certain amount of teachers and a certain structure that, that can't be changed. And so I think in terms of the needle moving, it's been, and I'm not saying can't be changed, big picture, long-term. I'm saying within my power each year, what can we do? And so I think that's when we talk with the needle moving piece. I think it's been layering and layering and layering, adding affinity groups, adding staff development, shift, giving access to math classes for all of our students, making sure we have some sort of free tutoring available. You know, all of those types of pieces. And then I think when we look at like, how do we pick it up and turn it on its head? Like I would say, for example, our student action teams that we're starting this year, I think is going to turn our disciplinary system up on its head. I don't think it's a needle change. I think we're saying we are no longer going to just dole out discipline as punishment the way that there's an expectation that we do in our school systems. We are going to really look at only doing what is effective unless it's ed code mandated, which we have to do. What do we do that's really going to be effective in shifting behavior? I think the other piece of it in terms of turning things around is like really looking at when we, I think whenever we're trying to shift and, and change curriculum, add curriculum, one of the big pressures, and I know as an educator, you can appreciate this. We have all these standards that are being pushed down from, you know, from the state that we have or from the country that we have to put in place. And teachers are under a lot of pressure to make those things happen. And so when we start saying like, okay, but we also know it's really important to add in anti-bias teaching and social justice curriculum and these other pieces where the, the teachers are willing, but where and how is that going to happen? And I think the thing with distance learning is we've had to make do with much less instructional time. We've had to be creative. We've had to be innovative. We've seen how important these other pieces are. And so I'm really interested in what those conversations will look like when we look at how we do some, some more shifting around those things.
My second question is actually around, oh, I'm sorry, does somebody else want to add something?
I was just wanted to add to that, Vice President Duran, is that one of the things that the middle school is doing and all the other schools are doing for the first time this year, that can be a potential game changer. And, and that is the administration of the pre-midi-year and post-assessment. And folks huddling up about where kids are academically and how do you strategize and meet and, and bring up those kids who are considered the anchor academically and make them a system of becoming performers strategically. And I think that's going to be an opportunity to help move that needle moving forward.
And the, the second question that I wanted to ask has to do with your professional development. I, I know that's been an important strand at your school and you've had some very relevant issues that you've addressed. And I'm wondering, how does that translate into the classroom? Are you able to really assess and evaluate that, that there is actual change going on in the classroom? Which is really the game changer because that's the basis of it all, right? So what is going on in the classroom pre-COVID? That you feel? And then, and then going forward when, when we're back in, in, in-person instruction that your teachers are going to do that's different, that does address inequities, et cetera?
Thank you. Yeah. I, a couple of pieces. One is when we've done our, our professional development, both when we did differentiated instruction, when we've done the culture responsive teaching and also the equity work, we've always had a, a very clear tie to, okay, let's take a lesson, let's take a scenario, let's take a whatever and work through that. Over the next two weeks, find two more lessons that you're going to do something with. Let's bring it back to the staff meeting and let's discuss it. So it's all been very hand and applicable, not like pie in the sky ideas. And then I, but I think in terms of the assessment piece, I think in general, that's a real, been a real weakness. I mean, I would say in our, in our district is like putting assessments in place. And I think it's hard with a small district. We don't have an assessment person at the district office who can make all that happen. But I'm, I'm really grateful for Dr. Wells' push with that this year and, and getting, and, you know, and, and Assistant Superintendent Williams, who's done the pieces around helping us to get these pieces in place. Because I think we need, we need to be able to get data that we, that we're not like waiting for, for months to see how we did with this. And is it tied to this or is it tied to that? You know, I think we really need more data on pieces. And so I think it'll be interesting to see with FastBridge and that social emotional component, whether we can, because really what we want to see is not just, is there a change in the classroom? I can go in, for example, through our evaluation process and observation process. We're talking about culture responsive teaching. We're talking about these practices. We're linking it to the PD. But what we want to know is, is it impacting the students? That's what we want to know. And so I think that's going to be a really interesting piece.
Let's go back to trustee Doss. And then any other trustees that want to ask an additional question, please go ahead and raise your hands. And we'll get to you before we go to public comment.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. I'd like to talk a little bit about the suspensions. And, I mean, we don't have to bring back up the chart, but I'm just wondering if you could hear a little bit about kind of the strategies that you guys have been implementing around suspensions, how to prevent them and kind of alternate things that you've been doing instead of suspension?
Yeah, we, over the last few years, have been really integrating in and shifting kind of the ratio of our restorative justice pieces. And when we look at, and I know restorative justice means a lot of different things to different people. And so what I'll say that it means for us in terms of restorative practices and restorative justice is preventative and responsive. And so what we've been looking at with that is for students who we know struggle in some sort of, of way or are having a challenge or whatever it is, how are we putting hands on in a, in a supportive way? How are we making sure they have points of contact? So for example, we had a kid last year who was really struggling around with behavior. So we had Mr. C checking in every morning before school started with that student. Let's make sure that, that, that kid, you know, is with, with Mr. C. And it wasn't just one kid. I'm just giving a kind of example of what we do. Check in with Mr. C. Let's make sure that we, you know, have a point of contact. You guys ready for the day? Positive thinking, planning? Okay, we've had a student who was struggling so much during the day that every time during break, we had a counselor checking in with that student every single, every single break. So like, that's kind of like the layers of support pieces. And then there's the response. So a student and another student have some sort of a challenge. How do we give them the opportunity to understand their impact on the other student? How do we give them the opportunity to make things right? And so both counselors, Mr. C, Ms. Floresca, myself have been running circles with students, which I think, again, like a lot of times it's in, it's in tandem with some sort of more traditional disciplinary consequence in terms of how we've been doing it. So they receive the traditional consequence. And then they also have an opportunity to then talk about what happened and to make things, make things right. Mr. C, you want to add to that?
I want to ask something really briefly. When you, student that you're referring to compared to a year later, the number of suspensions, out of school suspension and then the reduction that was in school or out of school suspension for the, my first year there, AMS. And with that student, I've seen a transformation. Every morning, I receive a positive quote from that student. We talk about some of the things that we did as a counseling team or on a wellness team. As Principal Brill was just mentioning with that student. With that transformation, that student has emerged into a leader and encouraging other students in this way of finding ways to, when it comes to be a leader. And it was just impressive. If I am delayed in putting up a positive quote on the Google Classroom, this student sends a message of what type of day that's going to be. And I think as we start looking at, when we look at data, we also got to look at the impact. That one student, yeah, that student is significant. So that's one thing that I constantly use as a, as a baseline. If it's one student or multiple students, but I've been so impressed with that student's leadership and also being able to emerge other students informing as a leader. And I'll close with this one. So that one student, I was thinking when we first got into this shelter-in-place, this distance learning, I was doing one of my power walks. And it was five things that came up for me that engaged with how we engage with that student. First, it was about loving that student, for who that student is, no matter how they come to school, when they come to school, but love. And then listen to that student about their background, where they came from, where they grew up. And just listen and listen non-judgmentally. And then after listening, start learning about that student. And then from learning, being able to have that student lean on the, their support team and lean on me. Or I'm being able to lean on that student to get some insight. And then the last thing was providing some type of leadership and modeling some type of leadership. And that student, when it stood out for me like that, I said, wow, those five areas of engagement, it started with love. And it ended with number five, being able to lead and just being able to see what this student is accomplishing this year and being able to hear from teachers, the showing up to class and being inside the breakout rooms. And the student has questions, raising the hand and engaging in a, in an entirely new way. It's just been phenomenal. And so Principal Brill, I have to give, you know, applause to you because as we talked about, looking at things in a different way, being a disruptor, that was one of the ways of saying, okay, let's take, you know, before starting class, let's take five minutes to do some type of engagement. And those are some of the things as we look at doing things in a different way, being able to pivot and do shifting at AMS. Those are some of the things that, that it requires. And it may take long to, to see the, the larger impact, but be able to see the significance of one because it starts off with that significance of one that creates a ripple effect and a transformation on campuses for campus climate and campus community.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. And I wanted to ask one follow-up question in relation to that. I have, correct me if I heard this incorrectly, but there are times when students are suspended and the suspensions are not mandated by ed code. That these are suspensions where it has been deemed necessary by the parties involved that the student should be suspended, but that ed code doesn't require for this to be a suspension? Am I hearing that correctly?
Yeah, that's correct. So there's a, it's not, it's not just a random decision either that we have a behavior matrix, both at the middle school and behavior matrix at the high school, that basically assigns consequences for behavior based on the number of times it's happened and severity of it. But ed code's very specific. There are specific codes, like for example, with, you know, relation to a weapon or that sort of thing where it's not the school's choice, we're mandated to do it no matter what. There are other, other areas where we can, where it's, there's school discretion. And we've used a behavior matrix to guide those decisions.
So my, my, my plea for this, for this evening would be to, for us to work collaboratively with the counselors and with the student and to develop a program to substitute suspensions that aren't mandated by ed code. Maybe have that student be required to attend a certain amount of counseling sessions. And then for the counselor to have to sign off before they can, you know, things like that too. I'd like to eliminate the ability to suspend a student unless it's mandated by ed code.
Thank you for that. Yeah. And I would say two things. First of all, I'm, I'm with you on that. The matrix is a board-approved matrix. And so I think what we have needed to do is to be consistent with our implementation of it. And we've worked really hard to be consistent with that. So it's not, oh, we feel this way about this student or that way about that student, but every time X, this happens. And so I think what you're pointing out, Portman Doss, is a need to shift that matrix and, and work through a different system and present something different, different to the, to the board that we can work on. And, you know, and the student action teams that we were talking about earlier are really, I think, a strong first step in making that change. And, and we, we've been working over the years of putting different layers and putting different layers. We have a lot of other support resources in place at this point. So I think that will be really helpful as we, as we work towards that.
Thank you.
Let's move to trustee Hinckley.
Yeah, this is not something you necessarily brought up in your report. But as I'm hearing you talk about the strains of this year and thinking about the challenges also of, you know, perhaps pivoting to doing some in-person and the, the, just the sort of instructional pressures to keep, try to keep up with material in an environment where it's not a normal year. And I'm wondering if you're beginning to, not just the students who are falling behind, but on a sort of whole class level? If you're beginning to see, you know, just signs of strain that students are, you know, how do we cover all the, all the same amount of material in this environment? And are you seeing that sort of bubble up on a, on a large scale level from the students, from the staff? And if so, what are some ways we can, or that you're thinking about? You know, how we adapt? You know, we have curriculum standards we have to meet. We have, you know, tests we're preparing people, kids for, but, and at the same time, you know, are there some sort of pressure valves that we can try to release so that we don't all sort of get to march and realize we've kind of pushed these students all the way through and expected more than it's really possible to do this year? So I'm, I'm curious about that because we've heard a lot about stress at the high school level, but we haven't heard about it on this large scale at the middle school. Maybe because students don't have the, the same sort of college anxiety building up. But I imagine that it's still a significant issue.
Right. I, I thank you. I, I, I think that there's been a couple of things. I think that our, our leadership team and then, you know, I think there's an excellent amount of work done that really prepared this year, really thinking about middle. I think it was really considered middle school developmental stage when we designed our distance learning plan. And I'm not saying it's perfect and this whole situation isn't perfect that we're in. But given the circumstances that we have, I think the amount of time that we're expecting middle schoolers to be on Zoom feels like a reasonable amount of time. There's a lot of daily contact, but it's not all day. The opportunity to have asynchronous learning in, you know, in conjunction with. The opportunity to have asynchronous learning in, you know, in conjunction with that, the amount of work that we're asking teachers to assign. And we've been really specific, X amount, average amount of time. You know, if you think about your average students, this amount of time is how much you're assigning for asynchronous learning. And again, I know it's not perfect, but I do think that the feedback I'm mostly that I've gotten from parents overall is that we're, that it's, we're kind of hitting the right amount. And to answer your question in terms of like, how do you get all of it, the same amount in? I mean, I, I don't think we do. And I think our teachers are working incredibly hard to make sure that our kids walk away this year with what they need to be able to move forward, knowing that there's no way with this, with our distance learning situation that they can get all of the same amount of material. So they're saying like, okay, of this material, these key standards, these are essential for our kids to make sure that they're successful and can do the next grade level. And I think they're really being incredibly thoughtful with picking and choosing and adapting lessons. I mean, they can't even teach the same lessons they're teaching before because they're not engaging when the kids at home. So they're really like, our teachers are being incredibly thoughtful and innovative with, overall, with how to present material and how to make, how to get that material across. But no, I don't think we can get the same amount. And I think it is that balance of like, how kids' mental health and well-being and how hard do we push that? And making sure that they're academically prepared as they move on. And I think we're just constantly in discussion and working to try to find that balance. So that's my honest answer.
Great. Thank you.
And we move next to Vice President Dura. And I, I will, I will just note here, guys, we, we are falling behind. So if all of the board trustees can ready their last questions and then we do have public speakers. Go ahead, Vice President Dura.
Ms. Brill, my last two questions. Earlier in one of the charts that have to do with the economically disadvantaged students, there's quite a gap. And I mean, we saw it in elementary, in our elementary data as well. And I'm, and it hasn't been something that as, even as a board, we've discussed very much in depth. So I think this is kind of a new data point that we really need to look at. And I'm wondering if you, since last, well, since you've got the information from the 2018-19 school year, if you and your staff is able to reflect on, on those kids specifically. And, and I think we also may have a stereotype of who those economically disadvantaged kids are because when I really looked at the numbers, I was surprised. And so I'm wondering if you've had thoughts about, once again, not necessarily during COVID time, but when we, when we changed back, if you have thoughts about what you and your staff are going to do to really start breaking down that division with economically disadvantaged kids and other students in terms of academic achievement?
Yeah, thank you. And I, I think you're, you're right. It's, it's, it's something we don't talk about a lot in Albany and, and we need to be clearly. So I think a couple of things, you know, how we look at putting services in place. So for example, looking at the Cobra tutoring that we have started and, and how we're going to continue that when we get back. I think with the fast bridge assessments, my house just got a little noisier, so I'm putting on my headphones.
Can everyone hear me okay? Great. So, you know, with the fast bridge assessments that we're going to be putting in place and really thinking about looking at who, who, who needs the support and really targeting with, with us putting in places of tutoring, targeted intervention tutoring. I also, one of the things that I've been thinking about with this whole process, because I think that, that the distance learning has really kind of brought to the top some of the needs for some of these students that we maybe weren't aware of before. And it's really given me pause of who are students who don't have a place that they can really be doing their work, who don't have access to technology, who don't have Wi-Fi at home. I mean, you think about Wi-Fi at home, I mean, in normal times, kids need access to the internet to be able to effectively do their work nowadays. Like, we can say they don't need it, but they do. I mean, we're not working on Google Docs all the time. They're researching on the internet. They're looking on Aries and kids who don't have that, they need it. And so thinking about like the need for hotspot, to me, is not, no longer just a distance learning issue. I mean, that's a access, I mean, asynchronous learning homework, kids working at home when, after being in school for a full day, they need that access. So kind of from a materials perspective, I think whether the district's able to continue to fund that afterwards or whether we need to work with other funding sources, that's something that needs to happen. We need to be continuing to look at, at materials and space and how do we make sure to give kids access? I'm thinking about, our library's been a wonderful resource. It's been open after school. How do we maybe target specific kids and be like, hey, come on in, you know, if you don't have sports, come in after school and let's make sure there's someone there to support with homework. So I, I think that, I think it's in that, that distance learning has highlighted a need that we could do a much better job with addressing.
And my last question has to do with the California Healthy Kids Survey. And I'll just take the top one, which is caring adults in school. Have you had conversations with your staff and faculty about how you would address that issue? Since it's, I mean, it's the lowest number, I mean, it's at 67%, but, you know, and, and kids, whatever the interpretation is of this, but, but basically, have you had that conversation in terms of, of how that connection of the adults, once again, to the kids that you've talked about so much, about how it's so important? And how, given the reflection, just from this survey, from the kids, how would you analyze that or how were you thinking of moving forward in addressing that issue?
Yeah, I mean, that was actually one of the main pieces of why we started the advisory program that we started. We had this wonderful group of teachers who put a ton of extra time into going and visiting other schools that had these types of programs, brought it back to our staff, presented to our staff. And really, like, this was a, the advisory program was created specifically to address two pieces, caring relationship with an adult and school connectedness. And the idea of forming these cohorts that were grade six through eight so that kids could form and feel, you know, like instead of being afraid of eighth graders, like I've got, oh, I know this eighth grader. And it was such an amazing thing to, to see it starting. You'd see a sixth and eighth grader pass each other in the hall, be like, hi, they know each other. And it, and it's, you know, just so, it brings out the best in our eighth graders. The sixth graders are so excited that an older kid knows them. And then they had this teacher who, their only role for them was to create this environment and this connectedness and these pieces. And we had been in conversation as a staff of like, do we want to add on an extra day for advisory? We're going to add on a second day? Do we want to, how do we, how, how much more case managing pieces could the adult do? And so we were really on a trajectory with that and then distance learning hit. And it was, and it seemed more important to build relationships within classes. But the idea with that also was that the kids were staying with that same group for all three years. So they had, they would have one, go, to go back to your question, they would have one teacher who, there was all three years, one counselor with all three years and one teacher who builds a relationship with them. And, and that teacher's sole role in that class was to build relationships with them and the students and with, and help the students form relationships. And so it was really specifically trying to address that. And then it goes on to seventh grade, their new sixth graders come in, they have the same other two grade levels, same teacher. So I'm sure we will get back to that after all this mess is over.
Thank you so much to you and your staff tonight for presenting after a long day.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
I believe you're muted, President Dura.
Yep. Thank you. Trustee Dos, I, I see your hand up. Did you have a final question?
I did have a final question, but in the interest of time, I think what I'll do is I will email you guys my additional questions because it's getting late and you guys have a full day tomorrow. I want to be respectful of that. So I will email my questions. I'll end with thanking each of you for coming this evening. Really appreciate it hearing from you guys. It was very exciting to hear about that. My daughter was also watching the board meeting and so she heard about some things that she wants to participate in. So that's always, so I'll, I'll, I'll help her to, to get signed up for that. But yes, I really appreciate it here for each of you and I will follow up with my questions via email. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Board Member Dos.
Yeah, let's go ahead and move to our community members and give them a chance to speak on this issue. Our first speaker is Cheryl Thies. Please go ahead, Ms. Thies.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you, Ms. Brill and AMS team. It's so good to see many of your faces for all the hard work you're doing during an incredibly challenging time. And you're doing it with middle schoolers, so I think you have to get extra points for that. I have a couple of comments. One is that I, I wish that we had included disability data for this, with the suspension data. Because I really appreciated your comments about doing, really having a data-driven system. And I think it's a place where, in this one respect, our size in Albany, it helps us. We don't parse the data as much as we could by things like race and disability, by things like gender, socioeconomic status and disability. And really, I think a lot of the, the nuggets of, of the information we need to know to design effective interventions lays in those intersections for a lot of our kids. So I just hope that, that, you know, I keep saying this at board meetings, but I really hope that we can take that seriously and really dig deeper into that information. I know at my work as an advocate that, you know, we have kids who don't want to turn on their cameras because they're learning from their cars. They're unsheltered right now. We have families being evicted. There's a lot going on and there's a lot of, of information that we need. And secondly, I just want to say, I always want to remember who's not at the table. So when we do our parent education and we other, do other kinds of events, let's not forget to make sure that information goes out in all languages that are commonly used. I know it's hard because there's so many in our district. But, you know, if we want kids to know we respect their culture, I think we start by respecting their parents. And part of how we do that is we make sure that we invite them to things in ways that they can access and, and provide that. So those are my comments. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Thies. Seeing no other community comments, I want to thank the whole crew from AMS again. That was a, that was really an energetic and exciting and inspiring presentation. And so try to get some sleep, folks. I, we have, you have a big day tomorrow and keep on with the good work. We really appreciate your presentation.
Thank you so much, everyone. Have a good night.
And that brings us to our review and action section of the board meeting. Our first item is 14-1, master contract between Albany Unified School District and Row Health.
No, this contract is a contract for Row Health Staffing Agency that will, they support school districts with various staffing needs. And as we prepare to set up our learning hubs, we are wanting to engage Row Staffing to help us with that staffing for our special education population and other populations that may need additional help at this time.
Are there questions from the board regarding this contract?
I have one quick question. Did we, were there other staffing agencies that were looked at before this one was, was chosen? Or is this just the one that most people use or?
Thank you for asking that question. I have been engaging many different contract agencies. Row Staffing seems like a best choice because they're used to working with students who have disabilities. And some of our other staffing agencies were not as experienced with students who have disabilities.
Thank you. And my next question, and my only other question would be, has the, has Row Health talked anything or spoken with or mentioned anything about interviewing or speaking with members of the community to kind of see or their thoughts so that they could have a better idea of who they would bring in to fill the positions?
They have not. They submitted several candidates for interview. And the candidates that were interviewed were strong candidates that represented the community and understand the equity issues in the community. But the staffing agency itself did not offer any opportunity to engage with the community. It was rather to engage with the, the department and the department's needs.
I actually do have one more question. I know I said that was my last one, but my, another question I have is, is this, are we presenting this because our internal practices for filling these positions is just overwhelmed at this time? Is that why we're bringing in a staffing agency?
We are hoping to expand our support to the individuals who need support with distance learning. And so of course, we're looking at any of our staff that can come back, but we do need to have backup to be able to support the variety and the number of individuals that we'd like to support for learning hubs.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Hinckley, you have a question?
Yeah, and I asked, I had asked this before and got an answer, sort of asking so that the public can just hear it. So we're doing this so we can support the hubs that we want to create because we can't use, we don't have enough of our own staff. So I guess my question is how we, how you came up with the, the sort of quantity of help that gets us to the dollar amount on this contract? And what your ability would be to expand that if, for example, they're able to offer a few candidates? In which case, we could expand the number of hubs that we're able to offer. I mean, I think the board has, and, and the staff are also really committed to doing as much as we can for students that are really struggling with distance learning. So I, I just wanted to hear a little bit, you know, what happens if you feel like you want to expand this? Do you have to wait for the board to be able to come back and bring it to us again? Or do you need some flexibility to be able to expand this? If we're able to identify good candidates that would allow us to support more students? Because you identified, I think, three hubs that you're interested in starting right away, the three special day class hubs. I can envision that doing that for a significant amount of time could quickly get us up to this contract cap. So I'd just like to hear if you feel like this is, how this would unfold if you were able to get more help that would push us past the, the dollar amount in this contract?
Thank you very much for asking this question. The amount was based on the hourly rate that they gave us. For our beginning hub number of students, the plan would be absolutely to ask to expand this, depending on the numbers of students that do want to be assisted in person. And so this initial amount is based on looking at bringing back 20, about 10 to 20 students. It depends on the amount of time that students spend. For example, at Cornell Elementary, we're going to be offering three days per week for two hours per day. Some parents may only want their child to come one day per week for one hour per day. Where that would allow us to bring in other students. We, we don't have bottom line numbers right now, but the plan is to absolutely expand, but start with an amount that could support the students that we're starting out with to bring back.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice President Dura?
Just one question, please, which is, have all the parents been notified, reached out to so that they can make a decision whether have all the parents been notified, reached out to so that they can make a decision whether they want their child to be participating?
The parents at the
Special Hub?
Sorry, I'm sorry.
For this hub, the special education hub?
So first, the a letter went out to Albany Middle School letting parents know about the social emotional hubs, letting them know that we're planning on expanding the hubs to instructional hubs. Of course, if this is approved and we're able to expand the staff that we have that could support. In addition, our parents at Cornell Elementary for the special day class were told about the hubs that we're planning on offering, starting next week, giving them the times. And the next rollout would be with the high school and seeing how many of those students are wanting to come back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's no, oh, there's public comment on this contract. So we need to move to our public speakers. Our first speaker will be Amy Appel. Please go ahead, Ms. Appel.
Hi, I would just like to ask for clarification about the reason for this contract. I'm a member of the Albany Disability Squad and I'm sure the board has heard lots from us in the past, but as you recall, the reason we formed initially had to do with the cuts to special education paraeducators that were made at the May 26th board meeting. And it appears that not all of those paraeducators have been returned to the staff. So I'm wondering why why we're going to contract to replace them when there are still people who could be brought back to the actual school district staff. Thank you.
I can respond to some of that because it's important that the public have all the facts. Due to no reason of their own, we had a number of paras with us with no assignments. And so it's not that we don't have or in need of additional paras at this time. And I wanted to say that to be real clear, and I don't know any other way how to say that. And this, and paras have roles and responsibilities, some of which is different from teaching and leading. And so for what we are going out to get is what we need to do hubs because hub is one of our priorities. And so I just wanted the public to know that piece. And Dr. Front, if you have anything you want to add to that, please feel free.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Wells. I did want to let the community know and let the board know that paras will be invited to come back for in-person support. We want, of course, for our paras to be available to be part of our team. But this contract was initiated to be able to provide hubs as quickly as we could, should we not have people that do want to return in person?
Our second public comment is from Niri Castillo McIntyre. Please go ahead, Mr. Castillo McIntyre.
Good evening, board and administration. Thank you as always for your service tonight and every day. I do want to follow up also on what my colleague, Amy Appel from the Albany Disability Squad asked and would like some clarification on some of the issues. I am one of the parents who received an email just today asking about interest in instructional hubs. But the email raises actually quite a few questions more than answers. For example, it is not clear to us what instructional really means in that instructional hub? And is it only for academic instruction? Is it for social emotional support? Also, we're not sure what the background of this behavioral aid would be. Is it the same as a behavioral specialist? It's not clear to us what the ratio of instructors to students would be. Would it be one-on-one? Especially for those students whose IEP calls for a one-on-one aid? And what would it be then for those students who might not necessarily have that kind of support allocated to them? And also, I do want to point out that having parents make this decision within less than a week before this instructional hub starts is not exactly the kind of time that one would need to make in such a momentous decision, especially at a time when the pandemic is getting worse across the nation. Thank you.
Thank you. That's our public comment for this item. I would like to turn this back to our specialized director, Dr. Ortiz Front, or to Superintendent Wells, if either of them has a comment based on that last public comment, before we go back to board questions.
I can address that. And thank you very much for the questions that came forth. The parent letter that was sent out today was to get an idea of how many students at Cornell would, how many parents would be interested in having students come back? In that letter, there is the invitation to ask individual questions, and I do want to talk about the kinds of things that we will be doing in the hubs. The very first thing that we would be wanting to impart to all students is the life skill of safety, how to wear masks in these times. Should there be more than one or two students, and even if there's only one student, we would be working on social emotional goals. But the main reason is to really help students who have not been able to access distance learning, to be able to be engaged with someone or people by their side to help them outside of the home environment, if that's comfortable for parents.
Thank you very much, Dr. Ortiz Front. I'm noticing the time and I'm thinking that we need to take a break from this item in order to extend the meeting. So board, it looks like we're going to need to extend the meeting. We had planned to be finished at 10:00 PM, but we still have we have two other review and discussion items after after this action item. So I'm looking for a motion, please.
I'll move that we extend the meeting until 10:45. I'm feeling optimistic.
I second that.
May we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Student Board, Trustee Corzo Clark?
Yes.
Student Trustee Mala?
Yes.
President Trutain?
Yes.
Trustee Hinckley?
Yes.
Trustee Dos?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
No.
Vice President Duran?
Yes.
The motion passes with a dissent by Trustee Clark. The student board member advisory votes were two in favor and the board votes were four in favor and one against. So the meeting is extended. Let me see. Vice President Duran, go ahead and ask your question regarding this contract.
I just had a clarification because I had already asked this question earlier this week. And it's regarding the paraeducators, the ones that we have not rehired yet. And my understanding is the reason they have not been rehired is because, as was put in the response, paras are, many paras are not receptive to returning to in-person services at this time. Is that accurate? So that that's why we have to go outside to get that service provided?
Dr. Wells?
Well, I think it's not that simple in terms of not ready to come back. As we did our analysis on how many pairs we needed based on the services and IEPs, we have a couple more than it needed at this time. And so that was the original reason. In addition to that, we now have a further complication with when you're talking about employees and working with the unions and having people come back and how they come back. And instead of waiting for an additional agreement or amendment, what you can do in the interim, if we want to make the hubs a priority, is contract out with staff to get the hubs up now opposed to waiting till we have all the agreements in place. And so sometimes it gets complicated, just like it sounds. It's not as black as white as we wish it would be. Okay, you have this number of paras calling back, they're ready to go. So this is what we need to get the hubs up and running sooner rather than later.
So Dr. Wells, just to summarize what you've just said, although I think you summarized it very well. This contract is the district's solution to getting hubs started next week. While the district continues to work with our labor partners on a fuller reopening. Is that correct?
You said that so perfectly well.
Okay.
Can I ask you a question?
Sorry, I was going to say the earlier question about the amount. The amount is a smaller amount as a backup. Should we not be able to engage our paras? We want to get this started right now and hope, and you know, there'll be more students to be able to expand this if needed. And should paras come back in person, we will be fully staffed to offer hubs for more students. So I just wanted to add that part in.
Thank you, Dr. Trustee Hinckley. Go ahead.
Yeah, sorry. So I saw the same description that Vice President Duran did. So this, I guess, changes things for me a little bit. I understand the urgency of approving the contract and getting the getting the hubs up and running because we have made this a priority. What happens, you know, these are children for whom continuity is important, right? And the connections they form with the staff that they're working with. So I guess I'm just asking for how are we thinking about how this might play out if, for example, we bring in staff for a few weeks or a month to serve students? And then do we actually have enough paras if they did come back? That would create a situation in which now all of these temporary staff that we hire will be gone and then the students will start new relationships with their paras? Or maybe you could just explain a little bit how the staff that the children in these hubs are currently working with will sort of create a bridge so that these kids aren't sort of being handed from one staff person to another over the next three or four months as this unfolds.
Let me say this. Trustee Hinckley, I really appreciate your desire slash our desire to have that kind of continuity where that there's a connectedness and a relationship with certain staff. And then when we up and running regularly, that there is no disconnect with a whole different staff coming in. That we cannot guarantee, and I don't want to be misleading. And so I want to put that on the table. That most likely it would be that kind of disconnect. And it's almost like a trade-off. What we're trying to do in the best scenario, at least have one of our own paras that would be working with a kid regularly so that when we do transition or pivot, at least that one pair, for example, can be there. So we are going to try to do that, but we can't guarantee it. And I don't want to mislead anyone in thinking that that is something that's going to happen. It's something that most likely will not happen.
I do want to emphasize the role of the Row Staffing individuals is to engage students with their current teacher and their current paras. So that continuity will still be there. The Row Staffing support staff would keep that continuity. And then we would have to see as we go how that would extend to, you know, continuity being held as importantly as it should be.
Thank you, Dr. Ortiz Front. I think that's a very important point that this, the Row staff would be tasked with helping these students interact with their current teacher and their current para. And that's meaningful to me. I would like to go ahead and move that we approve the master contract between Albany Unified School District and Row Health Incorporated, you know, in the interest of getting some special education and social emotional hubs up and running as soon as we possibly can. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
May we have a roll call?
Student Trustee Corzo Clark?
Yes.
Student Trustee Mala?
Yes.
Trustee Hinckley?
Yes.
Trustee Dos?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Vice President Duran?
Yes.
President Trutain?
Yes.
Thank you.
So the contract passes unanimously. Thank you very much, board. I hope we can get some hubs started and hopefully this will make more support happen for these students that have the most need. We move on to our review and discussion section of the agenda. The first item is 15-1, Board Policy 5145 dot 3, Non-Discrimination Harassment.
Thank you, President Trutain. So tonight we are bringing for review and discussion, so no action, Board Policy 5145.3, Non-Discrimination Harassment. There were three board questions that I want to address. I did provide for you in the details section, all of the changes that were made at the Board Policy Committee level. I wanted to also, in response to the three questions, let the board and community know that there are several sections that are struck out of the board policy. The reason for that is that when we were considering this board policy, gosh, spring, a little while ago here, spring maybe before COVID pandemic closed us down temporarily. CSBA, so that's California School Boards Association, actually implemented a new administrative regulation. So prior to that time, all of the language sort of delineating what and how in terms of the board policy were included just in a board policy. So CSBA in May, I believe, developed an administrative regulation, and that is where the language related to gender definitions and also the language related to grievance procedures is now housed. We didn't, we haven't had an opportunity yet to complete the process of reviewing the AR. But this board policy has been sitting approved with us for some good amount of time now. And so we wanted to bring it forward for your And so we wanted to bring it forward for your review and consideration. And we certainly will bring back the administrative regulation at a subsequent meeting. The third question was asking about a section that was removed from the board policy related to training. And this, what happened here was that when we considered the language that was found in the CSBA sample relative to the board policy, this language was in fact removed. And then actually, there's been even another little update to the board policy since the time that we approved it at the Board Policy Committee. And that language does now appear, I provided it in the board question. So I didn't want to, I wanted to honor the work of the committee and not go adding details myself. And so Board Member Hinckley and her eagle eyes captured that. And what happened was that some of the CSBA language has changed even since we approved this board policy. So I did provide that paragraph for you in the board questions. The board is free at this time to entertain how it would like to incorporate that language into the board policy during this review and discussion item. And or certainly, we can take this board policy back to the committee in order to consider that particular paragraph that was updated since the time that we approved. But I did want to follow our process with fidelity. And so I'm bringing forward to you for discussion that which was approved at the Board Policy Committee level in November of, I want to say, 2019. There were no other questions that were posed by the board members. And so I open it up for your questions or comments. And again, this is a review and discussion item, and it would come back at a subsequent meeting for approval. Thank you.
Trusty Hinckley, go ahead.
Maybe this is a process question, but so the paragraph that you found, Assistant Superintendent Williams, about the language that CSBA revised on the training that the committee took out because it wasn't in the CSBA policy anymore. Do you think the committee would be unhappy if we just added that back in? My understanding is they essentially revised this policy to match the new CSBA policy. I don't know if there were other, maybe a related question is, is that all that happened? Or were there sort of deeper discussions about elements of this?
Yeah, so to answer the second part of the question, that was the only piece. So when I was preparing this for, to bring to the board, I wondered if I might have lost my mind because all of a sudden this paragraph appeared that wasn't there before. And so this is the only piece of information that was subsequently revised from CSBA. And so, you know, I think our Board Policy Committee recognizes that sort of our work is to sort of vet the policies and, you know, really sort of deliberate closely over the language and then bring it forward. But ultimately, it's the governing board's purview and authority to revise and approve board policies. I would also say two of your colleagues are on the Board Policy Committee. And I think maybe they could also give some input into sort of process-wise, what they think might be most appropriate.
Just because I don't think I'll have other questions, so just my comment would be that I do think this issue of training and reporting that's in this paragraph is really important, partly because, you know, we've all worked places. Harassment discrimination policies don't work if nobody knows about them. So obviously, that, you know, we do a lot of education, but I think it's, I would prefer to, when it comes back for review and action, to include that paragraph, which does both cover the superintendent's responsibility to provide training and also to report, do sort of regular reports to the board about how training is going and how well the policies are working.
Yeah, so I think-
That would be my suggestion.
Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you. Yeah, I think that's very possible. And so the Board Policy Committee meets monthly. Our next meeting would be the first Monday in December. And so then this could potentially, this, the board policy, probably not the administrative regulation, given just the amount of time that we take to review these documents. The board policies could certainly come back if you wanted to refer it back to the Board Policy Committee for consideration of that paragraph.
I just wanted to ask Vice President Duran to speak. She and I are the board representatives onto the Board Policy Committee. And so I just wanted her to voice her opinion about whether this training paragraph should be put into the policy draft just immediately and come right back to the board? Or whether you think that this should go back through another round? You know, I think Assistant Superintendent Williams said it best or well that the committee really, we kind of get into the nitty-gritty of just parsing out language more than anything else. And I think this is a whole thing around the training and review, the board getting that review. And I think it's crucial. And I don't think that, from my perspective, that the policy board would have any issue with this being added, given, not only given the circumstances, but the fact that, with CSBA, but also the fact that the board does in fact have the right to change, to add, et cetera. So I think it's a key issue that we should definitely include. I agree. It's the governing board that has the final say over the board policies. Of course, the Policy Committee is a great sort of right-hand team to vet a bunch of this language, but this is an important paragraph. So given that, I think what I'm hearing from the board, and anybody else can join in, is that when this comes back as a review and action item, Assistant Superintendent Williams, that the board would like to see this paragraph about training and information to be incorporated within the Board Policy 5145.3.
Yes, I understood.
We have a, Leo Corzo-Clark would like to speak on this.
Yeah, this is a separate point, but near the end, there's this one line where it says, "Any employee who permits or engages in prohibited discrimination shall be subject to disciplinary action." And I know anecdotally, times where issues of discrimination or harassment have been brought up by students and the perpetrators were maybe given a verbal warning and nothing else. And I was wondering if that would qualify as permitting discrimination on the result on the part of the staff? And if not, if something like that could be made more clear to sort of incentivize that? Because that's been an issue in the past for some students.
I think to try to answer that question, I would say that where we spent the most of our time as a committee was really in the first paragraph, identifying sort of what constitutes unlawful discrimination, harassment, intimidation, and bullying. So really sort of identifying those categories of persons, right, that would be protected. I mean, all students should be protected, but thinking in particular about, you know, those protected classes of folks in terms of discriminatory behavior. So I think maybe your question is sort of connected also with this conversation we've been having about training and about really sort of being explicit in our training, both for staff and for students, around prohibited discrimination and harassment and around procedures for launching a complaint and then what that process would look like.
Okay, I was just wondering, because I know in a specific issue where a student was called a slur and that the student who called the person the slur was brought into the office and then nothing, nothing was happening, they just kind of said, "Don't do it again." And so I would just like to, I would hope that there was, it was a little more clear about the steps that would be taken if the behavior matrix was not properly followed.
Yes, just to sort of follow up on that. The language here that speaks about may include suspension or expulsion. And so I think then, as you're rightfully stating, that's where sort of it's important that the behavior matrix be in alignment with these policies so that the proper steps can be taken to resolve that issue in a manner that's satisfactory for the students. Thank you for saying that.
Not seen any further board comment on this discussion item. We'll move to our second item for discussion, 15-2, In-Person Board Meetings.
President Trutain, I'd like to make a comment about 15-2. I've been thinking about that, pondering it the last few hours. And the more I think about it, the more sense it makes to me to perhaps consider tabling this until the two new board members come on board, future trustee Veronica Davidson and future trustee Melissa Boyd, because they would have to live with the decision. And I think they should be part of that discussion. And my apologies for me coming around so late, but that would be my recommendation that I would hope the board would consider tonight.
Well, I want to open it up to board discussion and tabling it can certainly be a part of, that's one of our possible options. I also see that Ms. Davidson is one of our attendees and might want to speak to the board on this as well. Is there a board comment first? Or if not, we can open it up to community comment. Oh, okay, Vice President Duran, please go ahead. I was surprised when I saw this agenda item because I totally agree with the superintendent that this is impacting on two new board members. And so it doesn't seem appropriate for the five of us to be making that decision. We need, I feel strongly that we should wait until the two new board members come on board and then the five of us can then make a better decision. Trusty Hinckley, please go ahead.
I agree with that sentiment, that this is an important decision for a board to make since it involves our own safety and also has significant implications for the public's ability to participate in our meetings. If we were to meet in person, we would have to wear masks. It would be hard for the public to hear us. It wouldn't be televised, it wouldn't be recorded. The public wouldn't be able to attend much, if at all, without, you know, even if they were willing to, we would have capacity issues. So I think it's important that the board that's moving forward be able to consider what I think are pretty significant implications of moving in person and cutting off that format of the public being able to participate in our meetings and perhaps even understand us. So I'm happy to see it come back later.
Trusty Clark, please go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, President Trutain. I'll keep it quick. I brought this up months ago, when I thought we might be coming back. And then I was the one who requested that we talk about this. I spoke with Dr. Wells earlier this afternoon. I completely agree that it should be tabled, so the new board members can discuss this as well. But also, I want to remind everybody that if we're asking our students and our teachers to come back on campus, we need to lead by example. So I'm not going to be here much longer, but like I said, I brought this up months ago. And I wish we would have had this discussion back then because teachers and other folks have been asking us, you know, "How can you guys sit at home in the comfort of your home, having these meetings, and then expect our students and staff to go back on campus?" So I hope everyone keeps that in the back of their mind as well. But I don't know if anybody else wants to speak, but I would, I don't know if I have to second Dr. Wells's request or if I do it myself to table this. I think other people have expressed that as well.
I do see that trustee Dos has raised his hand, so I'd like to give everybody a chance to comment. And then we can motion.
Thank you, President.
You're welcome. Go ahead, trustee Dos.
Thank you. I think that what trustee Clark said is powerful, and I think that makes a lot of sense. And I agree that we are asking the teachers and staff to do that. I hear that. And so, you know, on that, with it being put that way, I would say that, if we follow the protocols correctly, then in person is fine, as long as we follow the rules and regulations. And if we do, I don't see an issue with that. I think the comparison is a little different, and I think it's important to clarify. So I wanted to clarify that we're asking the teachers and staff to go to their primary place of employment, whereas as board members, this is our second job. Not technically volunteer, because they do pay us a small stipend, but it is something additional on top of our regular jobs for those of us who work often behind the public. And so with that being said, trustee Clark does, you know, have to go in there when it's required for him to do so, along with myself and everybody else. So, you know, keep that in mind. What trustee Hinckley said really was, it made me think about a lot of things. We are not self-sufficient when it comes to running our meetings. We are very dependent on other people. And I think that I would like to make the request that the board become more self-sufficient and be able to run our own meetings. Because currently, our meetings are dictated by outside entities. And that makes it really tough for us to be able to run our meetings the way that we want to do them. Where often, we have to wait for what the city wants to do, their personnel and the different things like that, because they have all these different things. We can't run the meeting because one of their employees said that he won't come and do it, or whatever it is. That makes it to where we can't run our meetings ourselves. And this is a board meeting. It's not like a joint meeting with other entities. So it would be my request as a board member that we become more self-sufficient and that we get the technology that we need to be able to run our own meetings so that that is not an obstacle that we have when we do decide. Because maybe the new board members come on and we decide, or we go 3-2, that we want to have the meetings in person. But then we say, "Oh, well, we don't have the technology to do it." And that doesn't work, or "Oh, it's going to exclude people." But no, we don't need to exclude people, because then that kind of answers the question for us already. Then there's no need to bring this item. We're not going to exclude anybody. We need to put things in place so that when we have our meetings in person, people who want to stay home and watch the meeting can stay home and watch the meeting. People who want to come in person and speak can come in person and speak the same way that we are going to say, students who want to stay home and need to stay home can stay home. And students that need to come in person to learn will come in person to learn. We should be able to have that same setup for our board meetings. The entity in the district that is supposed to be governing over the entire district should be able to do that if we are going to have everybody else do it. We should- We should physically be able to manage it as well. So, that would be my request. Also, I think that both of our new trustees might be in the meeting this evening. So, if they wanted to speak on it, I'm sure, you know, I'd be happy to hear their thoughts on this. But also, I'm happy to table it as well. But I just wanted to share my thoughts. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, trustee Dos. And we can open it to public comment? Seeing no raised hands in public comment, I'm going to open the floor for motions.
We have a hand raised.
Oh, there it came, okay. We have a public comment from Veronica Davidson. Please go ahead, Ms. Davidson.
Hey, guys, thank you. I was moving rooms. Super appreciate you guys taking the time to let us consider this. And I would really appreciate if you guys tabled this until Melissa and I are on the board so that we can give our input. I do have a lot of thoughts on this. I don't want to take too much more time, so I'm just hoping you guys can table it. And if you want me to come back on and share more thoughts, I'm happy to do so.
Thank you very much, Ms. Davidson. So, back to the floor. The floor is open for motions.
Yeah, I make a motion that we table this item till December or later.
A second.
Do you have a more specific date as a friendly amendment? Say, December agenda item for December fifteen?
I mean, President Trutain, is that able to be put on?
It's a long meeting on December the fifteenth, but it's the will of the board, so.
I'll entertain Clementina's friendly amendment if she wants to put a date on it.
Okay, so then, can you restate the motion, please, trustee Clark, so that we're perfectly clear?
Well, I wanted to make sure that I'm doing what VP Duran is asking. So, do you mean, what's the December meeting? What's the date, actually?
The fifteenth of December.
Is that what you would like me to do?
Yes.
Yeah, so I'd like to restate that. I'd like to table this meeting until December fifteenth.
Okay, so you're asking to table this item for now and bring it back on the December fifteenth agenda?
Correct.
Okay, and Vice President Duran, do you second that? And student board member Mala made a second as well before the friendly amendment, so.
She can do it.
I second again.
May we have a roll call, please?
Student trustee Corzo-Clark?
Yes.
Student trustee Mala?
Yes.
Trustee Dos?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Vice President Duran?
Yes.
President Trutain?
Yes. The motion passes unanimously?
I didn't vote on it. But I will vote yes, just pointing out for the record.
Thank you.
Thank you. I know how that happened. Okay, and so, we're about to close this meeting. We just tabled this item, in-person board meetings, to our December the fifteenth meeting. And with that, we are adjourned.
Oh, President Trutain, before we, we didn't do, you know, items that we talked about during the meeting that we want to see on the.
Oh, I only heard that this one moved to December the fifteenth. I'm sorry, did you, did I miss another item that came up?
I was hoping to, there was, we had made a comment about the the discipline matrix, and it was mentioned that that was something the board needed to take a look at. So, I was hoping to put that on an upcoming meeting.
That surely can happen, but I believe that Principal Brill would want to work through that with her, with her team at the middle school. I'm not sure at what date they would have that ready. But that could, whenever they do have that ready, I'm sure that that would be a high priority of the board. So, I'll make a note of that, and so we can put that in the issue spin and so that we don't lose track of it.
Trustee Dos, just to be clear, and you may already know this, that the matrix that we currently work off of is the board-approved matrix. So, I'm thinking you wanted to come back to revisit it and see whether or not there needs to be some amendment. Is that pretty accurate?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, we'll look into that. And at our next one-on-one, we talk about something specific, because I want to learn more of what you're thinking.
I'm sorry, and trustee Clark, please go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, President Trutain. I'll keep it real brief. I just want to wish everybody a happy Veterans Day tomorrow, especially Dr. Wells and anybody who is at this meeting and all of our staff members. Thank you all for your service, and have a good night, everybody.
Thank you, trustee Dos. That's a, I mean, trustee Clark, that's a very timely addition and a great way to end the meeting. So, sorry, now, we are officially adjourned at ten thirty-seven. Thank you, board and staff.
Have a good night, everybody.